Okay, we have two upcoming meeting dates, December 4th and December 19th. And we have a few sets of minutes to approve tonight. The first is September 4th, and I will abstain from that vote, but I'll call for it. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of September 4th?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? All abstained, was everyone else, and Russ abstains? Okay. All right. And then the minutes of September 25th, do I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? And any abstentions?
I'm not sure.
Nope, Russ, you were here. I think we're all set. Okay. Pam, I'm gonna hold the October minutes. I haven't gotten through both of those yet, if that's all right. And then we have in our, on our agenda tonight, the set of meetings that we're proposing for 2013. Could I have a motion to accept that set of meeting dates?
So moved.
And do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay, and just calling out, I know it's a long time in the future, but one of our meetings will again be after the election day on Wednesday, November 6th of 2013. Okay, the first item on our agenda is an adjourned public hearing for Homesteads at Hopewell on Joe's Mother's Road. This, as noted on the minutes, was rescinded by the applicant. I think it's the town board special permit that was rescinded, but the applicant has requested that the planning board application be adjourned to a date uncertain because they don't have, obviously they don't have the special permit in hand yet or in process at this time. So could I have a motion to adjourn the Homesteads at Hopewell application to a, public hearing to a date uncertain?
So moved.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. And Pam, I'm sorry, should I have opened the public hearing again before we did that, or is that because it's been eight?
You could, you should do that. Open the public hearing.
Okay.
It's been advertised for tonight?
Well, it wasn't advertised, it's an adjourned public hearing.
I know, well, it's adjourned as to advertise, initially, someone could be in the...
Okay. So I apologize, I jumped to the adjournment too quickly. Could I have a motion to reopen the public hearing before we adjourn it?
So moved.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Thank you. And then, I guess, any comments or questions from board members, or any comments or questions from board members or professionals? Okay. And then is there anyone here in the audience, knowing that Joe's, the Homesteads at Hopewell application is currently kind of in limbo because the special permit application before the town board was rescinded? Does anyone want to come up and speak on that? Know that if it does come back to us, they will have to renotice with the same notice provisions they did when we initiated the public hearing a few months ago. Okay. And then if I could have someone re-make a motion to adjourn to a date uncertain?
So moved.
Thank you. And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. All right. The next item on our agenda is the Melly Lot Line realignment on Route 82. Okay. Thanks, Keith.
I'm so glad, I thought you two were brawling over there.
All right.
While we're waiting, there's this letter from the Department of Environmental Conservation.
I want to make sure we reopen the public hearing before we start the discussion. So are you making a motion to reopen?
I am making that motion.
Thank you? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go ahead, Mike.
This letter from the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. Basically, it's talking about the tank.
Yep.
Can we get an interpretation of this? I mean, it's, make sure we're all on the same page in terms of what this letter means. Sounds like you've got a lot of work to do with it.
There's really not. It sounds like there's, it sounds more to do than there is in this application specifically. Evidently, back in 1987, there was a turtle found on the site, Landings Turtle. I spoke with Ash, I don't know if they re-conferenced you on any of their conversations. I spoke with Ashley and Lisa on a conference call from the DEC. Essentially saying that they want to, they want to cover their tracks, they're gonna require an Article 11 permit. And essentially, the plan that we have is acceptable. It would only have to be modified slightly to maybe add a little bit more of the permanent barrier. If you can see, we have a permanent barrier located along the 100-foot buffer from about here, all the way around to here. I believe they're gonna want that extended into here, and possibly extended down to here. And then the other thing is that they're gonna ask us to do, I believe it's over in this area, something, is to create a little nesting area. That's the extent of what we're gonna have to do. Basically, what happens is Mike DeWig is gonna prepare the application, submit it to them, and we'll get a permit from them, based on this plan, probably modified slightly.
Okay. So, and again, that's the building that will never be built type of thing?
Well, right now, we are proposing this lot to, we've provided a note on the plan indicating that no building permit on this lot shall be issued until such time that that easement, that septic easement for the Stockyard Restaurant is abandoned, or that land is annexed to that property. And, so that's the plan for that right now. In addition, they indicated that an Article 24 permit is not required if you keep the driveway and the septic as is, which we intend to do. So there's no proposal to do anything here, so the Article 24 permit is not required. They are gonna require the Article 11. We're about 85 to 90 percent there, we just gotta modify, do the application and modify our plan. We gotta meet with them. We were hoping we'd had the date for this meeting, of our meeting. We're hopefully gonna meet with them, not this week, but next week. She's out this week.
Okay.
So, it sounds like a big deal. In this case, it's not such a big deal. We just got, they're okay with the barrier that we proposed, which is a two-foot-high welded wire mesh fence around that perimeter. They want it extended a bit, and they want to create a nesting area.
How large is the area with the nesting area in the enclosure?
I guess it's like 10 by 10, 10 by 15. It's a small area.
So it doesn't even sound sustainable?
We, we could go down the road of hiring somebody to prove that there are no turtles on this site, but we just decided, you know what?
Easier. Because it's just the 10 by 10 spotty ones.
Yeah, I'm not, again, I'm not assuming, I'm thinking it's in that range, 10 by 10, by 10 by 15, you know, it's a small little area.
Yeah, it's a little bitty thing.
I mean, the turtles are small, so I don't know how big their nesting area is. But the last sighting was in 1987.
I know there's other turtles in there, 'cause I've seen them run over on the road, but I don't know what kind they are.
I mean, don't forget, this wetland, it's not just here, it extends over to Waterkill, over to the Waterkill haunt. You know, it's a large system.
A large, yeah.
So, you know, chances are that they may not be on this property, they may be on the Waterkill property. So in addition to that, we met with Brendan again in the DOT, and we have a resolution on what's gonna happen here at the Red House, over here, sorry, the Horseshoe. The eastern section of the Horseshoe is gonna be eliminated. The middle section of the Horseshoe is gonna stay as is, but we're gonna restrict that movement to in-only. And there'll be signage at that driveway, indicating one-way into the site, so you can't leave the site from that. And then the driveway here at the field will be full movement for both parcels, any of it, in and out.
I guess one of my questions is, the fence that you're proposing seems low. I expected there would be some kind of mowing restriction or something like that, and I was concerned that you might have grasses above the fence line or make that difficult with the low fence for the turtles. Is that, do you expect there to be a mowing restriction?
Well, there's probably gonna be no-mow zone in the buffer area, the 100-foot adjacent area to the wetland. Yes, we expect that. We, I think that we already shown that as a no-mow.
Okay.
It was in the habitat assessment that there was a mowing restriction. Is it?
Oh, maybe it's a seasonal restriction.
It's from May 1st to June 30th, I believe, is when it is. But my question actually is, is it only, because it's not indicated in the habitat assessment where the mowing restriction is. So I wasn't able to tell if it's just on this side of the...
Well, you're right. It's a seasonal thing, not a locational thing that was written in the proposal to the state.
Right. So that's where my question comes from, because I think that the fence you're proposing, it may go six inches into the ground and about 18 inches above the ground. Wouldn't grass grow higher than that, and would that make a mowing hazard?
Probably. I wouldn't think so. I mean, the other, the other option that they've approved in the past is a concrete curb, which is even lower than what we're proposing. So I think up at Arlington High School has a concrete curb for the turtle fence. So, you know, we can't make it five feet high, you know, and it looks like a corral. And it's, it's to prevent, it's pretty just to stop them from going into the developed area.
I just think it's difficult with the mowing restriction that no one would see the fence.
If you're mowing it, you're probably...
Mowing grass has been growing through June 30th?
Case the joint?
Well, they'll be mowing up to the fence.
Yeah. You only hit it once.
Not gonna be mowing, not gonna be mowing both sides of it, it should be mowing up to it.
Okay.
Guys, we'll see if they, if they still have that restriction once they've talked about the other issues, because essentially, those restrictions, that mowing restriction was put in the habitat assessment as proposed mitigation measures, and the DEC hasn't actually signed off on those proposed mitigation measures, because I guess they want to have another conversation of some sort.
Well, like...
So they may, who knows if they even continue that mowing restriction?
They may not, with the permanent barrier.
But I, yeah.
The conversation I had with the DEC the other day with Ashley and Lisa, I forget her last name.
Massey.
Lisa Massey, indicated that they are, you know, that they said to me, and I'm not paraphrasing, that it won't be a big deal, you should have it in pretty quick time. Public notice is not that long.
The permit.
And the permit. So we're anticipating fully to get a permit with a slight modification to what we're showing.
If that's what the DEC wants...
Well, we don't know yet what they want, because they haven't had the meeting.
Right.
It just seems to me like an 18-inch wire fence would be very invisible.
Let's see what they come back with. As you point out, it's hypothetical at this point.
With regard to the traffic, anything else we should talk about as far as the site circulation or the entrances?
The only thing I would add to what Keith outlined was that they also did give, you know, conceptual approval to the curb cut in the lots.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Just right here.
And one of, one of the lots, the two of the lots share the same curb cut on 82? Is that, am I remembering that correctly?
Parcel A and parcel B are gonna share the same curb cut.
Okay.
Right there, yeah.
And do you have, is there an easement from one into the other?
We don't show official one on the plat, but it's the same owner, so at this point, we're not proposing any easement.
Okay.
And the septic's closed, and then, okay. Any issues?
So Keith, if one of those lots is sold, would you intend to put an easement in place at that point, or would you intend to tell the lot that doesn't have access right now that they would have to get their own curb cut?
Well, the intention would be that there would be an easement, yeah, an easement would be provided at that time in case a lot is sold.
Okay.
Just to note, there is actually a break in the guideway along that area, you know...
In the lot that doesn't have the access?
In the lot that does not have the access, in the event that someone wanted to develop their own, their own access, there is that building.
Okay. Michelle, any other, any other comments or anything we should go over with regard to the DEC or the site itself?
I, no, because at this point, until they issue the permit, we don't know if there's gonna be any conditions. And sometimes, based on the conversation they may have, it sounds like they're issuing you a permit because they don't, it's gonna be a quicker expedited process versus the other way. Sometimes, they will tell you they need a permit, and then the applicant can propose changes, and then they decide that a permit isn't necessary. So it's really, until they have that meeting, it's sort of difficult to know exactly what they're gonna require of them. You know, Keith gave indication that they, you know, had said a few things. I spoke with someone from DC, neither, Ashley wasn't there, she's away this week, I didn't, wasn't able to get Lisa. I spoke with another person from the permitting department, who was only peripherally familiar with the application, and he just said that it's possible there may be modifications to the site plan. Keith is saying that they, they had indicated that they would ask for some changes in the fence. I don't know if there's gonna be any additional modifications, and they probably don't know until they sit down at the meeting and hash it out a little bit.
Joe, anything for more, so we should maybe?
The only real comment we haven't talked about a little bit is the sewer access, if that, if that is tied in with the restaurant. We were asking if they show an access agreement for the house on Lot 1, because they, the thought is not to move the driveway, you know, leave the driveway where it is, so...
Also, if the, if it's deeded back over to the other property, would you just retain an easement for the driveway, or would you intend to, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? Okay. Is there anyone here from the public who'd like to speak out for the Melly Lot Line realignment on Route 82? Michelle, I guess I, I'm looking for directions. The changes that Keith is describing don't sound like they're significant to me as far as the, what might change on the plan, they sound like they're minor, but is there a chance that there would be significant changes from the DEC, or is...
I mean, I guess there's always a chance. They can make something change. I mean, the issue is now DEC is technically an involved agency in the secret process, because they are issuing a permit and approval. Without that permit and approval, they can't proceed with the project. You know, I, I guess the other thing is...
So can we not close the public hearing until that's in place, or...
Well, the issue with that is, if there are significant changes to site plan, the public should probably see them. Whether or not there will be those significant changes is unknown at this point. So it's...
Well, what happens is, there's two ways to look at it. You know, I have to get health department approval too, and I have to get DOT permit, and on any job, approval's subject to several outside agency permits. You don't normally have the permits in hand before you close out seeker. Having said that, I mean, we would, we're comfortable enough to close the public hearing, and hopefully go to the next stage, which will be approval at the next meeting, subject to a permit from the DEC and Health Department.
If there is a significant change to the site plan, then they, the applicant may have to come back. It's, it's a risk they could choose to take if they wanted to take that.
Well, if we're, well, we're asking in our, in our letters, we've asked if we could have preliminary final at the same time. And that would be the risk that we would take if there's a significant change, and we'd have to come back for a public hearing. If we just get preliminary approval and then come back to this board for final, we will see before final what the DEC would have wanted, most likely. But, you know, we'd still request that we get preliminary and final at the same time, since it's such a minor project, and then we'll take that risk.
I would ask, is there a chance, I mean, an avenue where the applicant could make any changes that were not directed by the DEC?
The applicant could make voluntary changes to the project and see if the DEC agreed with them. So yes, the applicant could make changes to their own, their own site plan, and then see if the DEC agreed with those changes. Or the DEC may come back to the applicant and say, you know what, we don't like the house where it is, and we think that just by placing it, you know, in this location, it harms the Landings Turtle, and therefore, we'd like it to be moved. It sounds like it's not gonna be that extreme, but it could be.
But, but in that situation, Keith would have to find a spot that was agreeable with the DEC. It's not like saying, just move it anywhere, right? DEC doesn't operate that way.
Correct.
So I guess my point is, anything that would change downstream would be pretty much in the direction of DEC, so I would be comfortable closing the public hearing.
But he couldn't do anything anyways until you hear from DEC, right?
Right.
Well, if the DEC wants significant change to the plan, the risk that he runs if we give him finals, that he's gonna have to come back and come back to the public hearing.
But even if we didn't give him a final, we just gave him preliminary, he still has to wait for DEC anyway, so...
Right. Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? I'm comfortable closing the public hearing with the applicant's understanding that in the event there is a significant change required beyond what's been described tonight by the DEC, that this may need to come back into...
And I mean, he's gonna have to revise the site plans to show whatever the changes, even the new fence, so that's, also has to be understood. This is not gonna be the final site plan.
We're gonna have to show additional information on this for the Health Department as well. I mean, the plan, you know, the plan that you approve on a, in a final, when it comes back for signature, is always tweaked a little bit differently, based on Health Department and based on...
Yeah, but this, this has a potential to move things around on the site more than Health Department.
Right. No, I understand what you're saying, but based on my conversation and what I'm, what I'm telling this board is that Ashley indicated to me pretty strongly that we may want you to extend that fence a little bit, and we're wanting to provide a little nesting area.
And I just didn't get that, from the person I spoke with at the C, I didn't get that, that, at that level of confirmation.
And that's why, that's why we're making doubly sure that this applicant understands that if we move forward with the closing of the public hearing, they should...
I'll be more surprised than anybody if I come back here.
Okay.
I'm different, believe me.
But you understand, I mean, that would be, that's the consequence.
I fully understand.
Okay. I know you do.
Yes, I do.
If there are turtles in that small area, and anything is built in there, they're toast, despite of all...
I don't think there's any turtles.
Yeah, I just, if there are, they're not gonna be there long once you start buildings.
I think they're over at the pond area, but...
Okay.
Gun club. Sorry, it's had a circle.
All right. If there's no other comments, and do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And Keith, we would put this on, do you think you'll have, have met with them? You said you're not meeting them.
I'm hoping to meet with them next week, so I could probably report back to you at the next meeting.
December 4th, which is...
That's not next week, huh?
No. It's the week after.
Yeah, let's do December 4th, and then, if I don't have, let's put it this way, if I don't have an answer on December 4th, I'll adjourn. I'll push it out to the next meeting.
Push the decision to the next, okay. Because I'd rather at least get some feedback before...
I would so. I would like to be upstairs, and they didn't hoodwind me.
Okay. So decision December 6th?
December 6th or 4th?
I'm sorry. Excuse me. December 4th. Sorry. First Tuesday.
Thank you very much.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is Mission Church Special Permit Application for Route 52.
Where do you want to start?
Just catch us up, give us a, give us an overview. We know why you're here, so just kind of let us know what you've got on site, you've done, I think the...
Open for public hearing.
Sorry, just a second. I lost my train of thought. Sorry. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay. I still lost my train of thought, I'm sorry. Special permit. So give us an overview of what you're doing at the site, and let us know what you're expecting to do.
Certainly. As you're aware, or you may be aware, the construction has begun, based on a preliminary approval to begin certain activities that fall below the limits of the special permit for soil movement. The footings and most of the foundation walls now have been installed, and the soil that was excavated for that purpose, the deleterious soil we need to remove from the site, has been stockpiled and is, is ready at this point to be removed pending this approval. The numbers that we provided to you at the last meeting are still accurate, our contractor believes, which includes a soil export of 1,430 cubic yards and an import of 1,300 cubic yards. Most of that soil is the soil that was removed for the footing and foundation, because it was unsuitable for the loading of the, of the footings and the slab, so that material needs to be removed from the site and replaced with structural fill.
Okay. Joe, any, any issue with the calculations? Everything's all right with them?
No, I mean, we looked at these in the prior discussion. I guess the only other question related to it is, now that you are proposing to crush some of that, how does that factor into the analysis?
The, the timing for the crushing didn't work out. They may, they may still choose to do that if the town board approves it, but at this point, the contractor would prefer to remove at least the bulk of the material from the site. So they'd like to leave that on the table for possibility in the future, but most of it, they're planning to remove at this point.
You know where the material's going?
Yes. The contractor plans to remove the, the soil to be removed to the town site on Route 376, which, is that, is that correct still?
Yes, we do have a location, yeah.
Okay. That's what the contractor's indicated to me was, is the case. And the soil import will be coming from two sites, that they refer to as Mid Hudson Development Site and Thali Industries. Import from Jackson Corners Road to Route 52, and the other site would be Route 84 to Luddingtonville Road through Route 52 would be the path of travel.
I'm sorry, where is this town, 376?
That's where our brush drop off is.
Oh, right here. Ah, yeah.
So the town stating is like...
The, the other information you had asked for with regards to trucking, they're anticipating three to four tri-axle trucks per day between the hours of 8:00 and 3:00. So again, not a very intensive moving, three to four per day, but they'll, they'll plug away at it.
Okay. And did we, did we get something from you in writing with that, with that detail? I'm sorry, I'm just looking through my...
I have it, I had it via email. I could, I'd be happy to send that to you if it hasn't already been...
Do we have that in our file, Pam?
I don't recall, honestly, but I'd be happy to.
I just want to make sure we have the details of it for...
Certainly.
And then, is there, we've already, we've already granted approval for this, so the special permit, does it have to be done by resolution? Is it a, what's the mechanism that we would approve this? Do we have to put it on for decision, or what do we? John?
Yeah, any questions?
Sorry.
How we actually issue the special permit for excavation and filling?
How do we do it?
Is that just a town planning board resolution?
Yeah, we can do it by motion, and we can...
And just follow it up with an amendment or something?
Amendment or something.
Okay. All right. Any questions or comments from board members?
No.
Anything from our professionals, anything to add, or anything?
I may note, just also, just to remind you that the, the soil for the septic system was exempt from, from those numbers, so it's not included, but that will also be removed and replaced appropriately.
That's fine.
Yeah, the only thing I might like to add is, in the future, we're looking at our code, and same as for the septic, that is an exempted activity. We think that the structural excavation and replacement should also be an exempted activity moving forward, but for right now, we're left with the fact that it's not, so...
So I know we're looking at a couple of changes later tonight that are referred to us from the town board. Is that something we should actually add as we talk?
As part of that language, yes.
That's what I'm thinking, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
But it sounds like it's, it's moot.
For this applicant, because this is a referral from the town board.
But next time the church tries to do this, it will not be moved, hopefully, or someone else does. Or somebody else.
I think you've learned never to do this again.
Is there anyone from the public who would like to speak for against the Mission Church Special Permit Application for soil removal? Okay.
I just had a question. Is the, is the structure being put into the area that was, where the, I understand, was the wetlands were removed and there's been fill put in there? Is that what I'm hearing, or am I off base here?
That, that's, that's basically accurate. The, the historic fill on the site was in an area that was at some point a water feature, be it a wetland or a pond. The historic fill is the fill that's deleterious that we're removing.
Okay. My only question is, is the surface that you're building on, is that stable enough to, to hold what you're building?
It is. The, we did do soil testing ahead of time, and the, the material that's being removed is being removed purposely to a depth that's appropriate for the loading.
And the material that's brought in has been compacted and tested to meet action standards.
Okay.
Let's just make sure that you email us what you're describing tonight, so it's in our files, or send us, send us a letter that summarizes that. Okay, do I have a motion to close the public hearing for Mission Church?
So moved.
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. And then, John, you said the planning board can act by motion to grant the special permit, and then direct...
Subject to judicial actions.
Okay.
So, I make a motion, special permit, grant the special permit for the 1,480 yards.
Do you want to say approximately?
Approximately, yes.
Okay, and John, you said with conditions, do you have specific conditions you want to add to the...
No, I thought we were gonna develop them in the near future, that's what I thought.
What?
No, but I don't think that...
I couldn't understand what you said, I'm sorry.
To be determined.
Yeah. I don't think you've fleshed that out yet, exactly, you closed the whole hearing, you decided to grant the special permit, and then you have to agree on the conditions that you want to tack on for the special permit.
Okay.
For instance, truckloads, et cetera.
So, we have what the applicant has described, do you want to just run through the list again, because we don't have it in front of us?
Certainly, that the export will be sent to the town site on Route 376, the import will be from the Mid Hudson Development Site and Thali Industries, those two sites, the import routes will be via Jackson Corners Road to Route 52, and from Route 84 to Luddingtonville Road to Route 52.
I don't think Jackson Corners Road is right, it would be Townsend to Hosner Mountain.
Townsend to Hosner to 52.
I'll take your word for it, just reading what the contractor gave me.
Okay.
The trucking schedule that they propose is eight o'clock to three o'clock, and the number of trucks would be three to four tri-axle trucks per day.
Monday through Friday?
Correct. They plan on working this way? Monday through Friday.
Three to four trucks per day, you said?
Correct.
Starting immediately?
If permitted, starting Monday.
Starting tomorrow, if permitted. Seriously, there's materials stockpiled on site, we'd love to proceed with construction, and if you would grant it, that would be very helpful.
Yeah, from an erosion standpoint, they have everything in place, the tracking pads are in place, everything's in place, we're just waiting on the permit, so we have no problem with that, provided.
Okay, I want to make sure we have your letter in our files, but subject to the items you just described, does anybody have any other changes or terms or conditions to add to the special permit? I'm fine with the hours of operation and number of trucks, I think the route is fine, so, okay. So, Mike, you're making the motion, subject to all the items we just discussed?
Second.
Have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, you're okay to start tomorrow, please just make sure we have that emailed tomorrow.
Sure.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Is that it, just for the special permit, or does that close the application for the site plan?
That's just for the special permit.
Do we need to come back for the site plan?
I believe the site plan was previously approved.
Site plan I thought was already approved.
This was a new item, right.
You're shaking your head.
No, site plan's fine.
Yeah.
I'm saying what they do.
Are we signed off on the site plan to move to a building permit at this point?
I...
Always have been, the building permit actually has been partially...
No, I don't think we have the final, I haven't signed the final MIR yet, right?
Because...
Yeah, it was mainly this.
My recollection is that the site plan application was left open because this condition came up, and in order to satisfy this condition, we were required to come back to the public hearing.
When you say left open, you mean that the resolution, we made a resolution, but you hadn't met all the conditions of the resolution, so you hadn't submitted your final map yet.
Because a new condition came up, all the other conditions were not satisfied.
Okay, so you don't need to come back to us for that, but you would need to submit your final map to us.
Okay, I believe we have.
Okay, Pam is gonna double check for us.
Very well.
Could you help us inform our client as to how long the turnaround time would be to get your final signature and then to bring those plans to the building department?
I think it's, I mean, it's something that if it's in hand, I would certainly be able to sign it this evening, whether, how you would transport it to the building department or get it filed, that wouldn't be my purview.
What do you mean? You can't...
And I guess Pam will advise us if one of them...
If it's in hand and all the other conditions are met, I don't know that to be true, but if that's, if it's in hand and all the other conditions are met, I can sign it this evening knowing that this is taken care of, but again, short of that, I'm not sure whether it's been fully reviewed or signed off on yet. I'm sorry, I just, I don't know where it stands, it usually doesn't come to me till the very last step.
And I'm thinking, Laurie, maybe you should put a catch-all also, a condition, you know, subject to such other terms and conditions as determined and recited by the town's year. If something comes up, you know, a roadway that can't be used and you have to use another route, then Scott be able to work with them, or impose some kind of additional consideration.
If we run into a problem without having to come back, that's all.
Say to Mike...
So, Mike, are you amending your motion to allow a final condition of, subject to the discretion of the...
I thought Scott said no, you just asked me to come back. I mean, I'm okay with him working with Scott.
No, they don't have to come back, I don't think at this stage.
I think the challenge we face is that the building department won't do anything until they have a final set of...
Don't wait, if I misunderstood, I thought Scott said that was okay.
And that's not exactly correct, but I don't want to hash it out right now, so the project is, has been started.
Yes.
And my understanding is we're waiting on information on irrigation.
And we allowed the project to start last time you were here, we agreed to that, that was fine.
Right, so they have been issued a foundation permit, and the only thing holding up really besides the filed map is irrigation, the generator for the irrigation.
So, the...
I'm sorry, it's frankly...
We're watering the grass already?
Irrigating the fire.
All right, so Scott, just to be clear, you're fine with an additional condition to the special permit that allows you at your discretion if you need to adjust a route or time or something like that?
Yeah, because they may run into some additional materials, so rather than have to come back, we'll just address that, now that the board knows that they have unsuitable on site, you know, if they run into a problem, we'll just address it now.
So, Mike, you're amending your motion, who, second, I'm sorry.
Second, yes.
Jason's seconding the amendment, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Pam, is the map ready, or does it still need to be reviewed?
Your latest plans are October 6th.
I don't recall the date. I don't recall, but I can check that for, is that the set that you have? It sounds about right.
Okay, good.
About right.
Is it reviewed and ready for signature, or is it something that needs to go through the process?
No.
Then I'll sign it tonight before I leave.
Splendid, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you everybody for having me today.
Okay.
Go build a church.
Go build a church.
The next item on our agenda is a public hearing for Banana Three Lots on Mountaintop Road. Do I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second? Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Hey, one for four, right?
There you go. Sounds like we got one.
Michelle, I thought we had an issue where the timing of the lead agency hadn't, did we already declare lead agency, or do we need to do that?
I think we declared lead agency the last meeting.
I think the last time.
I just want to make sure that happened.
And the old issue, I have not received anything from DEC yet on this particular application, like their secret clearinghouse letter. One of the major issues on this one was that, we did get a letter from DEP, because it's in the ownership, and they were concerned by the...
Oh, it was not working for them?
Yeah, yeah. Response to the threatened endangered species, which was basically that the, there would be no impact Indiana bat because the site was at an elevation where the, above where the Indiana bats roost, which is typically true. I spoke with DEC about that, and they said essentially what has to happen is they should have, Mike Newicki, I think it was Mike Newicki who made that statement, write a letter or an opinion saying why he thinks that there would be no impacts, and they may accept that just based on the elevation, or they may come back and require them to do some sort of assessment of the...
But it wasn't that this was in five feet of the typical elevation, this was significantly higher, right?
I think it was a couple hundred, couple hundred feet, right?
Yeah, it's...
I think we're at...
Like 1100?
They're like 1100.
We're at 100, the cutoff is 900.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it's possible that Mike Newicki may just be able to write them a letter saying...
And review the topography and elevations?
Yes, and this is a, this site is at an elevation where you typically don't see Indiana bats roosting, and then DEC can just say that's fine, but he needs to just speak with Lisa Massey and figure out what she's gonna require, because that was noted in the letter from DEP, they were not happy with the EAF response to that.
Okay, or it just wasn't detailed enough.
Right, and we haven't gotten the secret clearinghouse letter from DEC, so in that letter, usually typically, I haven't gotten it yet, did you get something from DEC?
I have one from the endangered species, not from...
Yeah, that usually what they'll do is, once we circulate for lead agency, you might not have seen it yet, because it hasn't been, I mean, it's been, I don't know, probably 30-plus days, or else it's probably been 45 days at this point, or more, but sometimes you don't get a response right away. They'll say whether or not they would like to see a habitat assessment in that letter. We don't have it yet, so I don't know, so you just call her, because she'll be able to tell you.
I've talked to her, I've talked to her previously, and she indicated the 900 feet was the...
She indicated that, okay, if she could just, if you could get a letter to put in the secret record or an email?
I think that she said I had to go through permitting to get the letter.
That would be, it would be great if she could, and it may come in the clearinghouse letter, in which case we can just put that in the secret record and that should suffice for DEP.
Okay.
And then you can just reference that letter in the EAF, just revise EAF to reference that letter.
Okay. National Heritage is what we got a reply from, sorry.
Yeah, National Heritage, this would be from DEC, the permitting division, so it's a little bit.
It looks like we may still be having some technical issues with, as far as being able to put the map up on the screen, so can I just have you turn this, the board has a couple copies of the plan up here, just so that, especially this is the first time this has been in, I want to make sure everybody can see it. Thank you. Mike, do you want to just give us an overview?
Good evening, everyone, my name is Stephen Burns, I'm an engineer with the office of Argeron Miller, I represent the Banana subdivision, the subdivision is located on Mountaintop Road and Old Stormwater Lot. The area is just over 13 acres, it has about two and a half acres of wetlands on it, there's also existing homes with a well and a tile fill on it, you have to come along to cut off two more lots, they will be up towards the top of the hill more on Mountaintop Road, which is itself, the proposed qualities are located in close proximity to each other, up close to the road, to try to minimize the imperviousness of the new proposed development. We're supposed to do some more of the green gardens and a small infiltration in the back of property, back here, the property will conserve the tile fill.
Okay, and I think we have a couple, just a couple of questions, I know we already talked about the DEC letter with the bats, is there anything else from the DEC that we're expecting? Buffer area, maybe?
They stayed out of, they stayed out of the wetland, and they put, they actually put 100-foot buffer along the entire edge, so there is no disturbance right now currently shown in the plan, so they're...
Okay.
We plan to keep it that way.
Are you putting up a fence, boulders, how are you demarcating the buffer?
Lineation with boulders, I believe.
Boulders?
Really?
I didn't hear what you said, Jason.
You were gonna put boulders all along?
Okay. And did we check the site distance for each of the driveways, are we okay with the site distance?
We did, we did go out and just checked the reasonableness of the measurements that they provided on the plan, they seem reasonably accurate, and they do meet the town code.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members?
How much use of a land will actually be left besides wetlands?
What do you, how do you define usable land, whether it can be re-subdivided again?
I mean, with the person, the people that buy a house there or develop it or whatever, how much land will they actually have to use out of the total piece of land that they buy?
Oh, for lawn area.
Excuse me?
For lawn area, basically.
Lawn, recreation.
For lawn three.
The lawn area is minimal, to minimize our disturbance, the site's currently wooded now, we're probably looking at somewhere around two acres of disturbance, so probably about, between the two lots, it's about, probably about, maybe three-quarters of an acre of lawn area on each lot. And then, and then the, and then the existing lot, the actual, the larger lot is the most central lot, which is 4.3 acres, if you were to take out the, if you were to take out the wetland in the buffer, I would probably estimate somewhere that you'd end up with maybe an acre of, half, acre and a half of land that's outside of the, outside that buffer.
I don't think it's subdivided, we can, is it?
It's not subdivided, yes, the lot count formula comes out to just over three lots.
Okay.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments from board members? Michelle, Joe, anything, I know the site distance is okay, so anything?
Yeah, I guess we agree on the, on the, what Steve just said about the, you know, it seems like the three lots is basically the maximum for that, we had some little minor things with the ESL, but we still felt that the three lots was supportable out there.
So, you're still waiting for adjustments to that?
I believe I made those adjustments.
Yeah, it's gonna be fine, it's just one, you know, very, very small numbers that we're talking about.
Okay.
Probably not even worth trying to fix. We did have a separate memo on the SWIP and the stormwater review, they've already talked to Steve about that a little bit, and he'll also have to go through an approval with the DEP, so he's aware that there are some issues with the SWIP, but they're not, you know, they're workable, what we feel.
Okay, no significant change to the plan would be needed?
Correct.
Is Dennis okay with everything? Town highway? I'm asking, I don't know.
Pam, I didn't see, did we have the highway department notes on this one? I'm sorry, I just didn't hear what you said, that's why I was looking at it.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry, oh, same thing, they're good. Me, talk louder, I whisper.
You mumble.
All right, as usual.
Okay, no comments, no feedback, okay. All right.
And I just would just say that DEP had some specific changes, they wanted revisions to the EAF, a few very specific ones that they asked for, so wouldn't you resubmit if you could just revise the EAF and take care of that, one of them was a threatened endangered species comment, and I think there was a couple other small changes that they requested in their, I'm sorry, DEP, DEP's letter.
Okay, I haven't, I haven't received that one either.
You haven't received a letter from DEP?
Nope, unless it's in my email somewhere, but I don't think I saw one from DEP.
Do we have one in our file, Pam? I think you got it last meeting. Michelle, you got a copy?
I think I got a copy at the last meeting.
Okay, okay, we'll make sure you have a copy if it didn't come to your direction.
Okay.
Okay. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak for against the Banana Three Lot subdivision on Mountaintop Road? Come on up, we have a sign-in sheet. Okay, no questions? Michelle, do we need to wait for the DEC letter in case they want changes, or is it primarily just the bats where it might be a limitation on construction period?
I don't know, and I don't know if they'll have any other issues, I don't know, because we haven't gotten their letter yet, but...
Have you had any conversation with the DEC?
I have, I have spoke to Lisa once about the Indiana bat and what sort of implications it would have, and she indicated to me that not, you know, that over 900 feet, they don't typically, it's not typically their roosting area.
And what about any other conditions from, anything else on site, the buffer area or anything?
That's all I spoke to her about, it's not DEC wetlands.
Okay.
So, it's just town, it's federal wetlands.
Doesn't the buffer area essentially cut off any area where the Indiana bat would be anyway, and you're not plenty on touch here, are you?
The Indiana bat isn't, isn't something that's, that lives... Um, the Indiana bat isn't, isn't something that's, uh, that lives in buffers. It roosts in, in the bark of trees.
Yes. But I mean, you're gonna be, the amount of disturbance you're having on the lots is very small. It's towards the front.
Yes.
So I would suspect any trees that they might inhabit or roost in would be towards the back of the property. So the boulders would be in there as a barrier in addition. That's, if I didn't say that-
Oh, I got you.
If I didn't say it well the first time, I apologize.
That's, I don't know that that's necessarily true because they, they just use whatever trees have, are the right types of trees for them. It's more about the type of tree. But in this particular case, the, um, the elevation is such-
Just not the right habitat.
That they don't typically go into that elevation. So that's why we're not as worried about it here. But the person I spoke with from DEC basically said to me, they just need some sort of certification- Letter from Mike Newicki, because what happened was the DEP letter, and I know it's, it was, it was kind of funny actually. Because I think their EAF said, Mike, according to Mike Newicki, it's at this elevation and there's no impacts on the Indiana bat. And DEP basically came back and said, who's Mike Newicki and why do we care? And, um-
Really?
You know, he needs to show his, his credentials, basically, and why, why should we accept this answer on the EAF? So that's why I know that there was a letter from DEP because it was kind of interesting. So I think at this point, what we need to do is close that loop with DEC and have DEC say to you that yes, we're in agreement that the elevation is, you know, is a restrictive thing here. And therefore, we're not concerned about impacts to Indiana bats above this elevation. And he, they may require Mike to go out and look at the trees and also say, and by the way, there's no habitat. Shag bark hickory or, or trees that's fully eating bark, so just certain size diameter, that kind of thing. But we don't know that until we get the letter from DEC.
And I forgot, you actually do have to amend your application to correct those items from the DEP, so we need, we need that cleaned as well.
Once you get the letter, it specifically tells you where in the EAF they want corrections.
Okay.
We're so close. Okay. Just in time to close the閉合.
If you want to put it up there, I got it. Not that one.
Do you guys have the plan that you can put up on the screen or? So I'm, I'm inclined to adjourn you just once, but we could also typically, when we know it's just something that's, we expect to be fairly minor as far as the things, you'd need to fix your application, make the adjustments that the DEP is recommending, and we'd need to have heard back from the DEC. But if we adjourn you, we could plan to issue the decision at the same time because we know it's, should be a fairly minor clarification from the DEC just that they accept your elevation.
Okay.
As well. Is, does anyone on the board have issue with that or question with that?
No.
Okay. So how long do we think it will take to get the DEC letter back? Because if we adjourn this, I'd like to make sure we can adjourn and-
Yeah, I'm surprised we haven't seen it yet. I think if you call Lisa Massey, you'll get, you'll probably get that letter pretty quickly.
I, uh, I don't have a problem with the second meeting in December being the adjourn date.
Just to give you a little bit of extra time?
Just to give us a little bit of time with the holiday and stuff in there. Uh, yes, December nineteenth.
Okay. So do I have a motion to adjourn to December nineteenth? So moved and second?
I second.
Second, okay, thank you. All in favor?
Yep.
I don't know why I can't hear you tonight, Jason, I'm sorry.
If you'd like to.
Okay. So what we'll do is, we'll plan to, oh, we'll have, we'll have the decision again because you're almost done. It's just that one last thing and we know your elevation is significantly above where that, where the bat is. But please make sure you amend the application so it's correct before.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laurie?
Yes.
It's the December, I think it's December eighteenth, not the nineteenth, even though the agenda says the nineteenth.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for correcting that. It is December eighteenth. It's the Tuesday night. Of course, because that would be the week, yes, Christmas is on. Eighteenth, how's that?
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. The next item on our agenda is a discussion item for the John Jay Gas Station on Route fifty-two.
Amazing we would get these, the latest set. I understand there's been some changes.
The, the, the plan that you have with you, the plan that is shown on the board here is the plan that was submitted. So let's, I guess if we can, we can briefly talk about that before you open up your information packet, which is being passed around at this particular time.
Give me the old song.
If you remember, this is the, uh, the John Jay site. This is obviously over across from kind of the school, which is the station. It scrubbed it up. And the plan is, is to rehabilitate that site for life, or redevelop that site in order to provide for a bigger median mark for the store drive-through. We, um, came before the board approximately a month or so ago, I believe, over that. And it was, um, it was concerned about, by, by the board for none of it. I guess I want to point out a few things on the plan that was submitted. They've been pulled out, round the town, so it's been a happen transition since then, and then maybe some recent changes on the control. What happens is the, as is this right now, you have two existing buildings, okay? The building is being proposed at currently, and this plan is actually, um, getting sized down compared to what you saw last time. I think it was around thirty-eight.
For two hundred square feet.
To three thousand, okay? We are just a hair under three thousand in regards to existing structures that are on the site. So effectively, we're turning the square footage area or sloping it there, is what we're proposing. We, um, I think, maybe internal site circulation, access points, things such as that were a concern. So soon thereafter at the meeting, I know that there was plenty of working, there was a meeting held on the site. And once you get the guy coming around the-
Right. We met out there, Brendan from Hudson Valley Engineering met out there, along with Albert from New York State DOT, permanent engineer. And we had some discussions regarding access to the site. I know at the last meeting, we talked about closing the, uh, the closest intersection to Lake Road and Route fifty-two. There's an access along fifty-two that we showed to be closed. And then during the last meeting, we talked about a turning lane into the site, a left turn into the site coming down fifty-two toward John Jay. And then limiting the, uh, the exit of the site to a, a right-hand-out movement. Effectively, what the, what the board was asking for is to try to force the track, the traffic on the Lake Road from the site. Once it enters the site, that way, uh, there wouldn't be any conflicts. And, and further discussions that we had, we originally had the pumps angled toward the proposed building. And our last site meeting, I thought, um, we had some conversations regarding taking the pumps, skewing them at a forty-five. Maybe it would help site circulation into the site, um, trying to avoid any conflicts with vehicles and that nature. The other thing too was, was, it always comes up, were deliveries to the site, both fuel and to support the, uh, the use of the site, which is coffee, convenience. And what we did was, we tried to show up a temporary loading area because that was a concern before. So we showed it along the side of the building, um, and that way we could have a tractor-trailer come in, sweep through the site and then exit on the Lake Road and then back out left or right onto fifty-two. So that, those were the modifications that we, we've kind of made, um, to the site. We tried to locate some employee parking toward the back, refuse enclosure toward the back of the site. And that's what you're seeing on our official submission that we made at the end of October. And I guess since that time, uh, the consultants had a chance to take a look at it. And just doing with some layout issues specific to coming up with some, I guess, some standards to address drive-throughs in town. Since I don't think we have a specific design parameter within the code. But try to adopt some standards. The conversations that we've had, specifically with Michelle, was to have a consultant meeting, um, to pull everybody in and just kind of go through some ideas to make sure we were all on the same page. And we've had that meeting, uh, actually yesterday. And going through the plan, kind of sat there, Scott and I, myself, Michelle, Brendan. And basically just marking up a plan, can make up with some, some flow, circulation ideas that would help the queuing specifically with the, uh, the coffee drive-through concept. And what we've done tonight is, is present, um, the product of that conversation that we've had yesterday in a very general sketch format.
Which is the third page that you had.
Yeah.
The third page?
I like that you brought the parking back in front of the building.
Yeah.
Well, that, I like-
There were a couple of changes in the monthly here. There was, what happened is parking in front of the building, so it kind of opens up. So we'll see that on that plan. I think we had total of, we sure total of six huge cars to be queued up. The purposes, this will drive through in the rear. On the plan, we have the front of you on the third page. That was moved to the side. And so what you'll see is, is now we can add, I think it was additional four cars to the queuing lane.
There's no escape lane. No escape lane?
Where the thing, for those four cars, based upon orientation layout, we can't provide an escape lane. Also note, we understand that there's some concerns in regards to the site next door. Okay, that's Archway Plaza. Archway Plaza, you know, has an issue regarding circulation of the interest in trucking. What we do show on your schematic phone, you can have a lot of information, I see, is a potential shared loading zone on the Archway Plaza site. And with that, then open, creating an open, a curb cut, the shared access between the sites allow for a trailer to move through the site.
You would proceed with that?
You would have to knock on the door.
I always say, I don't know that.
But we were asked to take a look at the specifics, to provide this schematic. We'll tell you that John Adams, uh, has already started a dialogue reached out to the representatives on the map.
And you still have the pedestrian access towards the front and now it's much closer to the actual building, so.
Right. Close to the building, it actually almost kind of lines up with the plaza next door.
And only crossing one lane of traffic versus coming across the whole park lot, that's good.
So what happened to trying to force people out on the Lake Road?
That's, that's still being forced with your entrance toward the front of Lake Road?
It's just the entrance closer to Route fifty-two instead of the one that-
Oh, coming out the front, just anybody coming out the back.
So they're still closing off one of the Route fifty-two entrances.
Next to the window, pickup window? If the building was shifted, because I don't know that you need the escape lane at that location, more so than maybe to the east. Did you, did you look at that?
Yeah, Scott, I was gonna say the same thing because the other thing is you have your refuse enclosure in the back and you're, you're gonna want to be able to bring people through the escape lane.
Because you already have the access out onto Lake Drive.
So exactly what's here, but just shift it over to the escape lanes on the, on the east side.
So you, so you would get the escape lane for the back portion of the queue.
People who haven't ordered yet.
So you, so you would get the escape lane for the back portion of the queue rather than the front portion of the queue.
People who haven't ordered yet.
Which is, logistically makes some sense, because from that way, that one.
So I think that addresses your earlier point about not being able to get around the back of the building with the queue lane.
I don't, I mean, I don't think that's an issue.
Okay, so what, what happens if he can't come in with an agreement next door?
Well.
No harm, no foul, right?
Then we're, we're.
You're back to what plan?
Well, then, you know, we're us, and we're back to us.
Okay.
But this.
Listen, you know, here's the thing.
But this is still the general plan you're proposing, or you would go back to the sheet two plan?
Well, here's, here's what, here's what happens. If there were another way to discuss a better consulting plan. And what we want to do is, we want to throw some of those in front of him, and have that especially, nothing pleases me more than to sit down and come up with a modified plan. It's about the joint site, which we have to talk about, and bring it to my client, and go, hey, you know, we want to entertain this, and, you know, for a couple of years. It's not, it's not something that I wanted to, but long story short, after it's all said and done, that discussion is really intentional. He's willing to entertain this, and at least have that discussion, so I think that, I think that's positive. I'm not guaranteeing, but we're here for tonight as a.
But you're putting the capability on your plan, it's not, it's not a condition of the plan. You're putting the capability on your plan, it's not a condition of your plan.
This, 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 this plan could be friction. If we make a comeback, it's like absolutely not.
That's fine.
So really, we're just here for discussion, yes.
Mike, just, just for clarification, the only thing then missing would be a loading zone on your site. A, a, a truck loading zone.
You have a loading zone.
So everything else, everything else you have, it's just the, the loading zone.
And, and part of the, the agreement we would have with the neighbor would be able to have a shared loading zone on their property, which is detailed there. That loading zone, the channel on that sheet three is on their property. You would give them the right of access, you would give them the right of, of, of. There may be utility issues too, because here's the end of the day, water's being poured across the street, we're all very clear about water being poured. One side of a given surface site, depending on how this all logistically works out too, we're maybe utility issues. The orders of the plaza, we've had some issues in the past, so we're trying to provide comprehensive plans that, that makes some more sense. I think that's what we're asking. You don't want to cooperate, it's all.
And I think they would jump at the opportunity to have traffic get from their site to Lake Road.
Yeah, but you're, are you only making that a one-way? Coming in from the, you know, the adjacent site.
It's one-way coming through, correct.
Wouldn't, wouldn't you want your tractor-trailer to pull in from Lake Road into the common loading zone? Because how are you gonna unload the truck? I mean, if, if, if the back of the truck is towards, towards eighty-two, I'm sorry, fifty-two. Then you gotta come all the way around to get, you know. I'm just looking how they're gonna unload the truck and get into the, into your site. You got a fence here, you got, I mean.
If there's a common access point, they'd have to, they'd have to walk across.
Is it stairs, is it? Okay, I mean, is it, is it level, it's all flat?
It's level. Be a couple of drop curbs, they'd have to walk across.
Okay, so, that's what, yeah, go ahead. I mean, that's, yeah, the goods, I mean, what are they moving?
What, I mean, your biggest truck would be, would be the gasoline trucks, right?
What gasoline trucks are?
Gas, the way, the way the gasoline trucks will come in is they would make a left into the site off of fifty-two, they'd temporary unload right where the gas tanks are, and the trucks would actually have to come through in front of the building. It would probably be a movement that would require a couple of turns back and forth, and then across. But we'd make a provision that they try to unload during off-peak hours.
So I think that's fine, I mean, so, so talk to me about the scaling back of the store in terms of, like, what, what, what lines of food and that kind of things are you guys carrying in there now?
I think maybe, I mean, Mitch, you can kind of speak to that.
Well, by now, it's a car wash, car garage, busy shop, reuse, reduced to reuse. It's can be installed with coffee and running, yes.
Okay.
So deli and so forth, fair food and so forth, is it, is it part of that?
I'm sorry?
Fair foods, things such as that are supposed to be a part of what this is. You can, if anybody that's in there, it's one of the, like, your neighbors.
So you, so basically, those trucks would be very small, so really, the only real delivery truck of any size is gonna be the gasoline, right?
No, it could be a tractor-trailer going.
Yeah, a tractor-trailer.
Sure.
Rather than getting in with the whole tractor-trailer thing.
Which. Is it gonna be a Dunkin' Donuts?
Does that happen?
No, not with us. Is it gonna be a Dunkin' Donuts?
Maybe.
Maybe. Even though there's one.
Hey, that's his choice.
Dunkin' Donuts. Little bit precise as well. Not Dunkin' Donuts, we simply put Dunkin' Donuts.
This plan here, at least for loading and unloading, provides for an area large enough to accommodate a truck. Where at least, if we were just limited to our site, there would be no restrictions or limitations to be able to accommodate that type of.
And I think the reason why we showed this common loading area now is because I think when we were out there, Brendan and I were out there discussing the site a couple of weeks ago, we actually witnessed a tractor-trailer come in the opposite to the site next door in fifteen, twenty different moves, but actually got a sixty-two-foot trailer through there. And the thought was, was try to have some commonality.
Yeah, so they, they did make it through the entrance of the Archway Plaza, they made it in. You can see evidence in that plaza on the curve cut that trucks that have come in here have took that curve many times, but, you know, a skilled driver, he made it in without hitting the curb, came around to the back of the plaza, and then, you know.
I'm saying, is this their loading zone now?
Six, seven jacknights to get turned around. Only thing now, isn't there parking, is there parking at Archway in that common loading zone area that you're proposing? Is there, is this parking there now?
There is right now.
No, I don't.
I didn't see a space to identify, but maybe cars. I distinctly remember an accident in that location of a car backing into a car in a parking spot there. So that would have to be, if there is parking space, you have to take a look at that, yeah. Laurie, Lieutenant General, our office, we'd be happy to be involved with having a serious discussion about the proceeds. We'd be happy to follow those discussions and be involved in looking at the vehicle movements.
Okay, great.
But either way, I mean, I think that site, it's an eyesore today, and I agree with you, the store in there is a disaster, and the faster it can get rejuvenated, the better.
I think you have better, just back, Mike, I think to something you said, if you have the fuel loading zone here in the front, which obviously you have to, if, if you do put the escape lane on the east side of the building, that gives a little bit more room for cars to get around and into that drive-through.
It might even allow the tractor-trailer to get out that way.
Possibly, yeah. Okay.
Just, just for the tanks, because if we're out there, I'd use this for filling too.
But I think it's, for me anyway, I was, I'm, I'm happy to see that there's spots in front of the building again. I was concerned with the last plan, that we've had no parking right in front of us.
With the parking, like, all the way from where the tanks are, so there's no conflict there as well.
So now your entrance, you have an, you have an in-only and an, and a right-out exit, an in-either-way and a right-out exit on fifty-two, and then you have your two entrances on Lake, so.
We're eliminating the one entrance at the intersection of fifty-two and Lake Road.
Just, I want to say something to the board. We did the presentation with the Hickman, with the town board, we have two layout, this layout to keep the place the way it is, garage is convenience store. They prefer this layout over the, to stay the way it is, and that's the choice.
Okay.
I want to make it clear, because I met with the town board a year ago, they changed the zoning. I bought thirteen sites from Potinis, I all of them have fully done except those two sites. And I got the green light to, to change the zoning and to come with this layout. Otherwise, I would have been open a year ago the way it is, and I have no problem to keep it the way it is.
Okay.
That site is not gonna be remedied.
I don't think anybody's asking.
No, it's not been remedied.
Yeah, one of the reasons for remediation, to understand, a lot of these sites, they weren't gonna change the layout, complications of the building and all that, so if you see throughout, you know, the number of stations that were destroyed last week, remediation is happening on sites which are not gonna change. Obviously, the intent is to make this site better and redevelop it, or not go through the expense box, we're doing remediation, the pumps are the same way.
No, the, the, the most polluted thing was the car washes. We have to knock the car wash down in order to have it remedied. The way it is to have it almost eliminate seventy percent of the pollution, we have to knock the building down because all the pollution underneath the car wash. Otherwise, it will stay twenty to thirty years to be cleaned. We gotta put a system and pump ten gallons a day, twenty gallons a day in the air, and stays forever. But the way we're doing it, we're going to go to the source, clean it out, how much is water we can, up to a million gallons, a hundred thousand gallons a day out of there, because all the pollution in the bedrock.
Okay.
How deep?
It's very deep. And we, we bring in the water in, we share them with the DEC, the houses will benefit.
I mean, if it's that deep down the bedrock, can you even pump it out?
Well, part of this is to bring, bring the water.
No, I know, you'll bring flush water, right, but I'm just talking about as far as remediation, remediation of the pollution in the groundwater down a bedrock.
Well, see, the, when you pull all the soil, the pollution will reduce in the water.
But that's why I was asking if it went down to bedrock and how deep it was, because if it's.
I didn't, I'm, I don't know how deep is it, I know there's this big, huge drywall in the back.
I mean, bedrock, a couple hundred feet normally.
Well, we, we sometime we go down three hundred feet.
Three hundred, you're not gonna be able to cleanse three hundred feet by pumping water out, I don't think. I mean, I, may I'm screwed up.
At some point, remediation, curbing, diluting, keeping, keep on doing it.
Yeah. I just didn't understand that part, I apologize.
And one time it was pumping almost eighty, twenty thousand gallons a day.
I like it.
I like it too.
This is one of these proposals I've heard a lot of people talk about, say, they want to see that site pumping gasoline.
I think the new layout, just switching that, the escape lane to the other side, I think the new layout works much better.
So you're saying the whole thing move over, the escape lane?
Escape lane before you place your order. Once you place your order up the menu board, on the west side, you'd come through, you wouldn't have it.
Along the common property line.
You would have it over here, so just shift everything.
You're shifting everything over?
Right.
Yeah.
No, that's fine, no, that makes sense, yeah.
Well, that, that way, if you have a tractor-trailer loading, then you can still get around and get in, and if somebody needs to get up to the refuse area or whatever, they don't have to drive all the way around, they can go right through the escape lane.
Schedule a public hearing?
We haven't, um, declared our intent to be lead agent yet.
Have we circulated it? I didn't think we'd circulated it.
No, we hadn't, we haven't done, haven't even declared our intent, and as, if we have a level of comfort that this site plan is, um, we're not gonna require changes to it, um, we should declare our intent.
Okay.
But that's not, I mean, you're still gonna talk to the neighbor.
Well, the, the, but, but the one thing I wanted to say is, you know, Scott, from my perspective, I think this site could stand on its own. Because you have a loading, you have an appropriate loading zone for a large tractor-trailer, you have the circulation to enable that. I'm not saying we don't want the, the sites to have.
What are we presenting at the public hearing?
It's not a public hearing, just a circulation.
It's not a public hearing, we're circulating every day.
No, I'm pushing for the public hearing.
No, I said, we're scheduling, start scheduling.
Well, we have to, we have to do.
Yeah, we have to declare the agency.
And that gives you time to talk to the neighbor and everything, that's a thirty-day run anyway, so.
With this page three, there's no place for a tractor-trailer on loading zone without blocking traffic. The parking spaces are a might.
It would be right here.
No, that would, I thought that was, okay.
So, so the loading zone and escape lane would function as your temporary level?
Yeah, because I mean, it's, it's not like they're gonna be there forever.
Right, they could pull in far enough that they're not blocking Route fifty-two, and you would still be able to get cars into the drive-through lane, I think if you just shift it over a little bit.
Well, tight, okay.
Well, but, I mean, however will a truck be there with the?
I don't know, that, that.
Well, they're not there all day.
Well, I mean, to Scott's point, I think we, we prefer to have the, the joint access between the two sites, and if that's doable, that's great. But I think this site can stand.
Without the common loading, I mean, it's great if they can get common loading, you know.
Because if that's.
But I think it stands on its own if they don't get it.
If that's a tractor-trailer though, and it's parked there, leaving room to get into the drive-through lane, that means someone's gonna be transporting from the tractor-trailer into the store.
Well, you'd have to.
It's tight.
They're gonna do that anyways.
You'd have to watch where it's, it's our vehicles.
Yes, and be very care, yeah, yes, it's tight. I was looking at it and saying, I don't see how a car could get in and around to the pumps, and in and around to the drive-through lane with a tractor-trailer in there. But that's just my eyeballs.
Well.
There's a lot of room there.
Once this, once this shifts though, it's gonna be here, and this is all gonna be open.
I'm saying the tractor-trailer would be a little bit that big.
Right, and this will be way over here. This'll come, this'll come over, so you'll have two lanes here. I'm not saying it won't be tight, I'm just saying it's, it's doable, I, obviously, we.
It'll be better than most.
The idea of the shared circulation between the two sites for loading, but.
I would agree with you, yeah.
I didn't. It is.
Okay, what's your opinion?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir?
Well, and for, for the proposed use of the building, the parking in front, the nice circulation for a drive-through, I mean, you think you accomplish what you need to with that. Okay, um, so do I have a motion to circulate for intent to be lead agent?
So move.
In a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay, so coordinate with Pam, and let's, let's get that out. Scott, to your point, with this plan, just make that adjustment to put the.
Move the building over.
Move the building. Okay, any other changes or suggestions from board members? Okay.
So I was looking if you just kind of shaved off eight feet from the right-hand side and moved it, and that's a lot of square footage. If you shave off this piece of the building and move it, then you seem to be almost preserve this escape lane and allow enough room back here from the escape lane this way.
Brian, you'll make the changes to this plan.
That's not enough width for a car.
Reflect them in the EAF, and then circulate that plan. And then I would just make it clear on the notes that this is a, um, option, and, and show the loading zone, but.
The loading zone on the site.
Right, when he makes the revisions before it circulates.
And Mike, again, just to reiterate, this square footage, three thousand, is comparable to what you have on-site right now, is that what you're saying?
I mean, we just actually, the numbers, it's like twenty, or twenty-nine fifty-seven.
But how much is it just for the separate building not counting the car wash?
The car wash is seventeen fifty-five, the existing store is twelve oh-two.
Right, so you're going really from a twelve oh-two store to a three thousand square foot store, because the car wash can't be used the way it is anyway. And you couldn't replace it as a car wash.
Yeah, but it's still a structure.
But you could replace that building and have another building there.
You could have two buildings, but that would really mess up the whole idea of a convenience store or a drive-through.
It would probably be as ugly as it is today.
Well, I'm just saying that it's not really a straightforward square foot for square foot.
Laurie, I'd also like to just, uh, let the board understand even the site-generated traffic from the existing conditions to this proposed condition. In the existing condition, there's, uh, four gasoline filling locations, and this, in this one, there's eight. There's the addition of, uh, the Dunkin', the donut shop, the coffee donut shop. So the, the traffic for the proposed site is significantly different than the existing site. You know, basically, it's, it's based on, like I said, the fueling positions, about approximately ten cars per fueling position in a peak hour. So we go in from forty to eighty cars just with the gasoline, and then a coffee and donut shop in the, in the AM peak could easily add about a hundred trips. Now, granted, most of these can be passed through by traffic, so it's not gonna be a significant generator of area traffic.
So it wouldn't add to fifty-two, but it might add to Lake?
It might add to Lake, but also, we just have to determine the accuracy of the intersection of Lake, and also even of the proposed left-turn lane into the site, where it, you know, it's, it's limited to about three queuing positions in that left-turn lane, to make sure that that's gonna be adequate to handle the, the generated traffic. But it does need to be looked at, and we discussed this yesterday also. I mean, there has to be, even the DOTs are gonna want you to present some traffic data to them to make sure that Lake Road and fifty-two and, and the left-turn lane are gonna operate.
Wait a minute, are we talking about a traffic study?
We are talking about traffic study, what we talked about was, uh, you know, checking the existing traffic out there, getting, uh, getting the data and seeing how it's distributed.
But as a site-specific study.
Not, not a full study, like a subdivision.
It's not all surrounding intersections, it's just how this is gonna function.
How Lake Road.
Let me try to challenge a couple of those things. Is there, there's already a donut shop there in the very close part there, right?
But, but not, it's not.
So how many people are really gonna, additional people are gonna say, moving that donut shop that much is really gonna generate.
You're going from a walk-in to a drive-through. Going from a walk-in to a drive-through.
Right, but, I mean.
So you're, you're talking about, you're talking about, it's probably fifteen to a hundred cars.
The gas, the gas pumps is what's gonna generate the.
What?
Gas pumps, well, I was gonna challenge that one too, I mean, do people, I don't drive, make special trips for gas.
No, it's not, again.
Driving by and there's a gas station.
It's not necessarily an issue of new traffic generation, it's gonna be mostly passed by.
It's that you're slowing down on the road to make a turn, and then you're coming back out.
And you're gonna, you're potentially gonna put a hundred cars on Lake, on Lake Drive to have to exit onto fifty-two, that is significant. I mean, that has to be looked at. You can't just say, yeah, it'll work. I mean, the same thing, if, if ten cars wanna take that left into, uh, into the gas station in the peak hour in the morning, and there's only end up queuing for three, it's gonna create an operational problem. So, and, but there are solutions, I mean, we might, maybe the left-turn lane needs to be extended on the other side of Lake also. And maybe Lake, you know, it's a potential that it might need an auxiliary turn lane on Lake.
Okay, okay.
We know those are, those are some straightforward things, but it has to be looked at and made, and determined.
So you're comfortable with what we're talking about as far as a site-specific traffic study?
Well, I'm, I'm, I guess it's a good time to ask this question, but I, when, typically, with something like this, and traffic and generations and increases and so forth, typically, you would allow, you would hire a traffic consultant, report what would be done, and submit it to review and so forth. My understanding, that policy may be changing the counter, so I, I need a clarification, because is this something that, if, my understanding, you guys were actually handling, forming a traffic study, and that paid out of the Esper, or the proposal, how, how does this work?
Do you understand in the way it stands now, if you correct me, I, I misspoke, Scott, but it's, yeah, it would be paid out of the Esper, but before anything is done, a scope would be presented to, to the applicant to review and comment, and then that would be done. In this case, even now, it'd be sort of a step process. I mean, the first thing would just be the data collection of getting the, the traffic counts, uh, doing the site-generated traffic, and then expanding as much as we can.
I think I could maybe go a step further and say, if the applicant, we're trying to do this to save time and expense that is done one time. And then we're obviously gonna accept the findings of this traffic study. You may want to challenge him, but if, if you wanna not do that and hire your own consultant, then our consultant is still gonna review your work, and at the end of the day, you may pay two traffic consultants, so.
And that's why.
The intent is to try to simplify both time and expense and have it done one time.
Okay, I, I understand, but again, this is, I've heard it around in the rural mill, but I wanted to give clarification exactly how this went, because this is fairly foreign and any other town exists, so in terms of having our consultant do the work, and this is what you get.
Right.
Problem, and then have your guy look at it, fight it. It's basically going in, going the applicant direction.
Yeah, I have to admit, I'm pained by this, because nobody up here has asked for that, and traffic consultants suggesting the need for a traffic study, don't you see any conflict of interest there?
Town's traffic consultant can spend just as much time reviewing the applicant's traffic study as it took to create the traffic study, so the idea is you do it one time.
I, I understand it, no, Scott.
And we're not gonna question it, you know, the town is satisfied, and then hopefully the applicant is satisfied.
What I'm saying is, nobody up here said, hey, we need a traffic study.
So you didn't hope for the day, I said, the idea of a traffic study.
Right.
Well, that's what we.
Hold on, Mike.
For this particular site?
Wait, 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 no, let me, let me, I want to clarify something. We rely on our professionals to advise us what might be needed. I think what's, what it, what might be an issue here is clarifying that it is the applicant's decision whether this professional, that, also the town's professional would perform the study, or where they have an independent person perform the study of their own choosing. The comment is, if it's your, your independent person of your own choosing, you know the town has a professional that's gonna review it, and that's been, that's always been the case, so if you wanna go that route, that's fine.
So another question in the field on positioning.
So there's just.
The, the existing, there's, there's four fueling.
No, six.
Six?
So do your research further, because you got three pumps, and we just moved to four pumps. The existing right now, we have three pumps, which is six fueling position.
Six now?
Yes, but he said four. That's, you know, he gave us twenty-five percent.
You were only showing two on your, on your S's.
But it's a three, and the pump's still, and you could go and look, take pictures, they, they have three pumps, six fueling position over there.
Well, just make sure that gets clarified, and we'll go here and look at it. I guess, again, just gotta read you the numbers.
Yeah, so I mean, if you're not comfortable, no, because it's new, and in the light of that, if, if you're not comfortable and you wanna have your own traffic study, but just understand, we're gonna go through it as we always do, so choice is yours.
Right, well, it's like something that I also have, it's like my scripture, like, oh, we don't do them anymore, no, no, Scott, he'll do it for you. It's, it's kind of, that's, that's an elaborate thing, but it's kind of along the same.
Should be less in time and less money.
That's the intent.
Unless they don't like the results, then they can go hire.
Well, we got, that's right.
Yeah, if you don't like the result.
And I don't like it, then I gotta hire an engineer anyway to challenge him. Now, I have no, no, no any juice to challenge him if he don't, if he don't like what he proposed, you know.
Sure you don't.
No, then I gotta go back and hire a consultant to challenge the study.
Well, like I said, just to, we're giving you the option, just whatever you want to do.
I, I want to be very clear, it is just an option. If you choose to start with your own traffic engineer, that's not a problem. And what I would want to do is, if, if that is the route, we'd need to be very clear what you're recommending as far as what you think should be studied, and then let the planning board give final guidance to the applicant as far as what to, what to do.
Right, does that serve as, that's, that's the same, I can make sure it's in the same page.
Right. Right, okay. You don't have to tell us tonight, but if you have a feeling whether you wanna hire. a independent or...
What I'd like to do is, is if you could, put together a number proposal, get that up, because that'll certainly either define what the parameters are, whether we choose, whether the permission to go within house or decides to go independently, at least they'll have a criteria by which everybody's planning on the same.
I think that I want, I think that I personally, and I won't speak for all the planning board members, but I would like to see that, so that I understand what you're proposing before we finalize anything between professionals.
And in this case, like I said, it would really be, you know, it would be more than one step process. I mean, the initial process would be to collect the data, which would have to be done, you know, in either case. You know, we have to count, the cars need to be counted on 52, Lake Road, and then we do the site generation. All of that stuff is pretty, you know, pretty black and white, there's not, there's not much interpretation there, I mean, you know, that can be done. And then from there, we're going to make a decision as to what would have to be done. If it's just Lake Road and the turn lane that has to be evaluated for this particular site, then that's what we need to do.
Why do we have to do traffic counts before we can nail down exactly what the scope of the study should be? I guess I'm not following, because that's not something we normally do.
Just, just in terms of...
You'd have to do it anyways.
What's that?
You'd have to do it anyways, right? The traffic counts, yeah.
I mean, it's just, it's the first step in it.
But Jason, my point is, if this applicant wishes to employ their own professional to do that, we should be able to lay out, here's the full scope of what we, as a planning board, are expecting for a traffic study. We shouldn't need to have the counts first, right?
Well, I think it just sort of falls back into that thing, into doing what's most appropriate for the particular site. Because I think, yeah, if it was completely going to be done on the outside, it would be going back to the first comment I had when I reviewed the plan, is in that it needs full traffic impact stuff. Because I think there's, no matter what you do, you're going to see that, it's going to be increased at least in the magnitude of like 100 cars in the AM peak, which would certainly warrant, you know, traffic stuff.
Okay.
Wait, I want to take that apart. 100 more cars are going to come down Route 52 because of these changes?
No, would turn into the site, would stop traffic, change the traffic flow.
So it's not just, I mean, it's also just the operation of, you know, of that development in its location. You know, that doesn't mean that 100 cars are going to come from different places, most of it would be passerby traffic. But even though, even that, there would be some, there would be some site generated, there would be some traffic that's generated. I mean, it can be as high as 70%, the traffic can be passerby traffic. So it's traffic that's already on the road, it's just that it's not accessing this site or using Lake Road right now.
But also taking consideration, if we move the Dunkin' Donuts, we move on the traffic from one side to the other, it's the same traffic.
Well, there's no drive-through.
Yeah, true, no drive-through.
Right, I mean, there's a difference, you know, there's a significant difference between the generated traffic from...
I have these Dunkin' Donuts all around, which is, I carry most of them, between 228 cars and 320, 24 hours. Just, it's not 100 cars an hour.
No, 100 cars.
What was that?
228 to 320, the busiest store.
In a 24-hour period?
24 hours.
In a 24-hour period?
Yes.
300 cars?
Yeah, but I don't think anybody's pulling up there.
Like Knoxon.
At night, 4 o'clock, in the morning.
Because we have the meter, we could tell you how many cars I drive to, and how many inside.
We'll talk.
We'll talk.
Why you pick up Knoxon World by the way, talk? Why you don't pick up something else?
I can pick on a company if you like.
Pick up Knoxon World, that's steady traffic there.
Okay, why don't we, can we have something together for our next meeting if we put this on for discussion again? That way we can nail it down. You guys can make your decision about which way you want to go.
We'll get it done by next week.
So we'll put this back on for discussion on December 4th.
To circulate, right? But the bottom line would always...
We already did the motion to circulate.
Just so everyone doesn't get too excited. Brendan feels there's mitigation for anything.
Yeah, no, I'm saying, we are.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
I want to make sure we're still circulating.
We're not saying that the project is doable, it's just...
We've got to make sure the term on the O R is...
Lori?
Yes?
Can we just recap what we're asking, and then do this, so I'm clear? I have, we're having them shift the escape lane to the other side of the building, revise the plan to show the loading, that loading can be accommodated on this particular site, but also show the shared loading.
Right.
And then revise the EAF to circulate to reflect the changes of the plan, and then Brendan will prepare a traffic proposal.
Yes, and I think there was a reason we thought there were only two pumps there, so if the application only shows, states that there's two, let's just make sure it says there's three, so that the difference in the circulation is clear.
If there's three pumps, somebody's stuck in the middle.
They're going to prepare the scope and estimate.
Well, that happens at...
And then the work will be done? Yeah.
Three pumps, yes.
No, no, I'm not, I'm not doubting that what I'm saying. Your plan, what you gave to us, showed only two, so we just want to make sure that your existing picture is accurate.
Brendan, the only thing, the biggest variable is what's the drive-through passerby.
Say it again?
Right? Isn't that about the only variable?
The pump, I mean, the pumps do make a difference, I mean, it's...
In the word. You've got to put the page 900.
Okay, yeah, 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 where it says gas pump by, that's right.
So the only thing is, what's the passerby?
I just want to make sure it's accurate, and if your application said it's only two going to four, make sure it says where it's going.
But it's also how it goes in and out.
Uh-oh, sorry. Because you're going to have, instead of coming in, you know what I mean? Make sure that the difference, what is now, what you're going to is accurate.
40% passerby.
It's going to affect your traffic.
It's better for you.
That's what I'm saying.
Put up a cardboard. As I understand...
Michelle, I don't have any... Okay, hey, guys, hey, guys, one conversation. Michelle, I don't have any other changes on the plan. Did anybody else have other changes that should be done?
The only other thing that I would bring up is the back entrance. I know there's a driveway on the other side, is this Lake Road or Lake Drive? There's a driveway on the other side that goes to the...
I think we're fairly close to everybody.
It's fairly close, if, you know, if we could make sure that we're off after that. I know the other one wasn't, this one looks like it's really close.
Put it in front of the handles, for example.
So, I mean, that's always the benefit for operational, that cars are opposite each other in that last second.
Okay.
I like it.
Now, did I understand correctly, that from when the applicant was speaking, that it's either as-is or 3,000 square foot though?
No, I didn't say as-is. I said, we could stay with the two buildings, we walk out to car wash, convenience store and garages, or we go to one, convenience store and gas.
Okay, so you would have two buildings, so you would rebuild the car wash.
Yes, and I fight for a car wash, or we move the garages over there also.
Garages.
Zone for garages also. If anyone wants a car wash, we'll have garages with two bays, if you like.
Personally, I like what you're proposing right now. I think it's a better use of the site, I think it's going to look a lot nicer.
Just trying to understand what you meant.
Tell me, what do you like it? You like, you want garages or you want to come here and store? I want to know as Robert, what do you like?
I don't know, I just, you know, I didn't understand how you convert the car wash to garages, and who would store cars?
There's a planning board, we come with the garages, we show you when to start the car wash, when to put the garages, that's how it's done, isn't it?
Okay, I don't want to get, I don't want to get off on a sidetrack here. I think we're, the majority of the board is very comfortable with the plan as you're proposing it right now. We've suggested a few tweaks, and have you come back for discussion at our next meeting on the fourth, just to finalize scope of traffic. And anything else that comes up in the meantime? Okay?
Because I accept all of you.
Did they answer? Yes, that was okay, okay. All right, the next item on our agenda is the Hopewell gas station under 82.
You're still here?
Hey, is this another information? That's another information.
Hope you enjoyed as much as you enjoyed the last one.
And how does this compare to a super pack?
For a while since we've seen you, Mike.
This one, well, it's got different issues, but let's just talk about the procedure by which, we talked about the last one is the same procedure as which we are now with this one. We had made some modifications to the layout on the site, but upon input from the planning board the last time you were here, what you have in front of you on sheet probably two is what we looked at last year, which is what you submitted on, and as part of that consult meeting, there was also discussions around Hopewell. And I think there were really three, two, three main issues that really came into the debate. I guess the first of all, the discussions in the meeting, same thing, Ramis' schedule to be a case three, which is that, that we think reflects some of the discussions that ever had about, there is maybe some difficult ways to get there depending on how the work feels about it, but let's talk about it. So I think we all kind of agree that in this particular case, there was remediation done, and how to, if not aware of... The intent, and always has been the intent, based upon the configuration of the site that we looked at going on, prior to the pump locations, you can't be located anywhere on keeping the ends of this communication.
They just did it.
And that's the reason why that was proposed, and this one did not, because this is a complete change compared to a portion of the site that we're planning to make. So what we did is, we have a corner locker, like, for lack of another term, would be kind of define to some degree a gateway to the camera.
Keep going, keep going.
All right, so what happened is, we also modified this for the size of this store, okay, as it relates to what you saw the last, the last year. We are now at a 2350 square foot, there is no C store, there is no drive-through as part of it, okay? It's like, just because of the size, it's not accommodated, okay? But it is proposed to remove the existing store and put up a new store. Bring that to the intent of this obvious shape built in here, try to broaden, toward the corner, towards the open dock. We have a couple of restrictions, where the existing building is 13.2 feet on the rear line, we're required to leave that 13.2. So we're 13.2 now, when we did this original layout, the one we're going to do at the end of this month, this meeting, we are holding that 13.2 layout. There was a local law that came out that allows for these distressed properties some flexibility as it relates to layout and setbacks and things like that. So we kept that setback, we didn't necessarily have to be a new setback, but we certainly had to be the setback that was before. We also have sewers even on the back side of the lot, okay? The building, and we're proposing, we're against that sewer. Full load pipes, we roll them in. So I guess one of the things we discussed at the meeting was the possibility of even taking this building and even going back further. And let's, potentially even, you know, we said it would look like zero lot line setback off the rear lot line. We don't show that on your sheet three, where you can still go right on the parking line, but we do have, you know, about two feet there separation off the rear parking line. And then shifting the building further to the north, okay, we end up, I think it was about six feet off the sewer, was lateral itself, which we understand was about what we needed in order to be able to service, you know, the sewer line at some point. So, you know, those need to take into consideration, so what you can see is that whole building is some back further to the corner of dust, and further opening up the site. And that's shown on our sheet three of the management stretch, which is determined. But, so there's logistics in terms of being able to locate the building in that spot. I don't think there's any continued issue related to providing the building to that location. One of the other things that was discussed, which I'll tell you, pre-admitted against this, we have to have discussions with the owner, is there's some talk about, right now you have an access that comes in, this is just, you know, in and out, okay, which will give you the redirections and the location. Then you have another in and out entrance down at the front room. We had always proposed providing some striping, you know, striping in here and limiting this access here, the intersection coming out directly into the lot. Not many people do that now.
I was going to say.
So, but the effort and the thought was to provide for something that actually formally try and make sure that people who can want to go out the entrance have to go out, and not cut across the left. There was a discussion approximately in terms of walking and coming and off with an entrance for a 376, okay? And maybe possibly eliminating the central port together. I'll let Mitch elaborate on that, but the reality is, from a business perspective, 80% of this traffic, and this business gets served by traffic coming down through that. It doesn't come off of this, okay? That would be absolute site.
And wouldn't you be essentially driving through another gas station, you have to that gas station?
Well, there's a gas, empty magazine that was us. So, you know, it would have to be some kind of configuration.
That's right. I thought that was one contiguous paper, sorry.
You have to peel off of here, but again, in order to close this entrance here and allow for that there, maybe from a circulation standpoint, it may make some sense, but you know, if you were coming down 82, and you had to come down this location, you literally have to come like a U-turn to get into the site for 82, okay? And then effectively, if you wanted to come and take a left on 82, you'd have to do another U-turn and come back out. That would be the travel pattern for those traveling north on 82, getting gas and going back to sell them.
Leave it the way it is.
From a circulation standpoint, you know, again, looking at it today, guys, it didn't make a whole lot of sense to us.
I have a question.
Well, that's fine, but I just want to say for the record that, at the meeting, in terms of relaxing the offset requirements, I mean, a lot of the motivation for relaxing to the extent you described, is possibly improving the circulation by coming in off of 376. You know, and I respect your concerns about the business sense of it, but I just want to go back to those setbacks. You know, we were very open to working with you on the setbacks, if we could greatly improve the circulation inside, so just keep that in mind.
What makes, hold on a second, what makes this a distressed site? That's my first question.
In terms of meeting the criteria as it applies to the situation. Explain to them the status of the site as it relates to consideration.
The site is, we spend almost $1.7 million cleaning the site. The site is not 100% clean. Underneath the building, still dirty. We do an injection every month, every two months with GRC, we inject in the ground.
You're still going to have to do that, right?
No, if you knock the building, if you knock the building down, I can scoop all the dirt out of there.
So it's all the dirt underneath the building?
Underneath the building, and we cannot come to the structure of the building. And when I look at the other places, moving the building back will enhance the situation by, will have more stacking. Right now, if you, if you have a pump by the door, another car will not come in, will not pass by. Much as I love to do it, much as I hate to do it, the reason I'm doing it, just to have more stacking and more parking, so I want to open the site up. The way you're saying, if coming out of 376, there's a mobile gas station on the road, over 80% of my business comes out of 52, that mean I kill my business.
82.
52, 50, 82.
I don't have a problem with that.
You guys got to understand, okay? 52, the one by J and J High School, or this one, okay? There's a money that's going to invest there, and has to be justified, the investment. If I'm not justified for my investment, I'm not doing the project. Same thing, J and J High School, minimum $2 million cleanup over there. Nobody got to dump $2 million over there, just to put a shed with 1,000 square foot and two pumps and make the traffic good, make the way everybody wants it. Is a gas station that exists, I don't even challenge the taxes there, it could be zero tax over there, because that property is not soluble, it's all polluted. 12 houses polluted over there. I'm trying to bring the water in, I'm working with D C and working with Bittini to have everybody have water into the houses. We met with the town board, we met with the town supervisor.
I think we're good with where we left off on John Jay, as long as you guys are okay with it.
Same thing with this side, I'm trying to push the building back in order to have better stacking, clean up the side a little more.
Okay, I just wanted to understand what...
That's the only purpose, I want a better... That's the only purpose, I want better, better situation.
So, Mike, the, the entrance closest to the light, are you still proposing the striping here and have the right in and the right out? But you're not actually gonna put a curb there to prevent somebody from taking a left?
Still need to swing the tractor trailer in for fuel delivery.
Okay, okay, all right. All right. But you're gonna strip it?
Leave it the way it is.
Strip it aside.
And I don't think there's anybody here that disputes, by the way, that moving the building back is a good idea.
Yeah.
It makes it really, it can actually get around the pumps.
Regardless of the flow, it's a good idea because it opens up the site, right?
It's a safety, it's a public safety improvement.
Well, you're also getting more parking and everything along the sides, keeping the pedestrians away from the gas pump.
I'm not comfortable marrying it too, because I think each stands on their own.
Well, I think that's a point, a good point, is there's going to be, you know, I, I can, I, in terms of meeting all those, you know, by shifting this building back to the rear as it is instead, it may not be such a bad thing for the site to open up. The building doesn't increase, it's not going to increase the parking, anything like that. So to have that in conjunction with that, you know, where I don't see whether the two come together, Scott. If, if that's something that the town would like, there's some kind of avenue by which we can take that building and pull it back further to open it up because it is a tight corner site, and we'll do, if we prepare the two plans, it opens it up quite a bit. It'd be nice to get a little bit more of a breathing on the front of the lot. Then that'd be great, but it's, it's, tell us how to, how to, how to do it, and then let's move on. For some reason, there's some avenue by which we can do it, because, you know, there are variances, because I understand, you know, with special permit and so many word, you know, there are variances, so logically, we're gonna have to work through that if we were to do that. We won't, we won't do it. Tell us how you want to get, how to get there.
Keep in mind though, you're going from 1,300 square feet to 2,300 square feet too. They tell us how, you know, tell you how to do it.
That's what.
You also propose to go from 1,300 to 2,300.
Yes, we've always proposed on increasing the size of it.
So the, the other thing that I'd point out to the board is that even during that charming period right after the storm away of gas stations, that section by the side of the building where you're pulling and using now, even when there were people backed up, was empty. I mean, it is dead, it is the deadest space in this village.
This, the sewer easement, encroaching on that, does that cause a problem for maintenance?
No, the sewer, I don't think that it should either way. I think it's also.
So there's still enough space there if there's maintenance to be done, you can get in, you can get to the pipe.
Let me say that after you, that direction.
Now, the bank, would they have any complaints or would we need to consult them to weigh their side easement between their property?
All adjoining property owners would receive notice of a public hearing.
Okay, so they would have to be contacted to make sure that.
And, and you'd have to recuse yourself.
Why would I have to recuse myself?
M and T.
M and T?
They're not part of the application. Well, if you want me to.
No.
Okay.
We're just giving you a hard time.
I can do that if you'd like.
They're the only two people involved that would have any complaints. And if the sewer's okay and the bank doesn't care.
That might not be a bad idea.
Michael likes to run the meetings.
No, either way, I mean, I think all these, all these ideas.
You can have it, huh?
All these ideas have merit by themselves, and I think the idea of potentially opening up that thing.
No.
I'm not saying close off Route 82, Mike, I'm just saying, if people could get out of the bank and go that way, it does, rather than, how many people do you see today?
Get out of the bank and go what way?
Go right, directly into the gas station, from the bank.
Okay, well, we're there now, we're talking about something different.
That's something different.
No, we're just talking about the setbacks for now, I thought.
Right.
If we've never proposed interconnecting these two different sites together, I think it's just an issue of, you know, again, if the avenue by which, if the word feels that that seems to be a reasonable, you know, makes sense, then how do we go help, you help me?
I have some clarification on that. I spoke with the, the town attorney, and the process by which you would do it is to go to the zoning board of appeals for a variance. So you would still need to get a variance for the side, side, I guess it's a side setback there, rear setback, side setback, it's a corner lot, so. So you would need to, to go through the zoning board.
And that, that certainly makes sense. I'm hoping to go with.
Would you allow the agent to, to see for, kind of place, you know, coordinate with you?
Well, you have to go to the zoning board with both, either page two or page three, right?
Um, no, because the special permit language that's written, the new special permit that was adopted, I think in July, allows them to keep their pre-existing non-conforming. So, so as long as they're not increasing the non-conformity, they could stay the way, they could present the footprint the way it is.
May I say something? I don't necessarily agree with that, but I don't want to use this forum to resolve a legal issue, and I think that issue can be resolved between the attorneys in terms of whether or not we do need, or we can exceed the non-conforming dimensions that presently exist on that site. I'm convinced that the legislation permits.
I thought you were referring to the setback. I was just referring to the setback.
Yeah, we're not talking about the size of the building.
Yeah, we wasn't talking about the size.
I think we're okay with the size.
Just setback.
We actually agree.
There you go.
No, in all seriousness, I don't think that's.
I was just discussing the impacts of the setback on the bank, zero.
We discussed that outside, he, according to his analysis, he said that we're gonna have to go to the zoning board for a setback, because such a long.
Well, if you go with plan three.
It's my interpretation that we can exceed under the non-conformity section, existing non-conforming setbacks, that we don't, you know, we can exceed the standards without getting a variance, you have that authority. But again, as I said, that's a legal issue, and I prefer to resolve that.
See, I thought we were talking about plan three, which.
Regardless, we can, we can resolve what may need zoning board approval or not, we can do that offline with the professionals, we can figure that out. And if need be, the planning board, when you come back for the next discussion, will refer you over and it shouldn't be.
Sounds to me, again, the jury of the board, the vote on the ability to move that thing back.
Yes, you get additional parking, you have much better circulation around your pumps, you have, I probably wouldn't have put the refuse container there, I would have moved it over by your loading zone.
I think the goal is to improve circulation and, and public safety on the site, and anything that does that, I think, betters the site, the site plan.
Somebody stand on a pump right now, and a person behind them, they cannot get out. That door, it's not too, not, it's not too late.
If you move the refuse over to where the loading, proposed loading zone is, that way your truck gets in and out without affecting the parking people using the convenience store.
Yeah, we can try to tend the high buildings as best we can, but there's not a lot of place behind it, but we can, we can move that to the side.
Where's the loading?
The loading zone is right as you pull in, yeah.
So you want to put the refuse right on the corner of?
Well, instead of having it here, I would put it over here, so if a truck is coming in, it has a straight shot, rather than having to come around the pumps and be right in the middle of the door.
And then the only other comment I'd like to make is just that you received comments from Dutchess County today, I don't know if you've seen them, so.
That's a pretty close to the building. Further away from the building, that's probably better.
Just one of the ones you were in the box.
Michelle, with the size of this, what, what's the parking requirement? Is there a, I think we'd said you could count the cars that park at the pumps. Is that correct?
Well, and the other issue is you already have a pre-existing non-conforming condition with parking.
Okay.
Technically, so, you know, they, they would be allowed to basically have the parking, but yes, I would also, I would also argue that you could count the spaces at the pumps as spaces, because people will often drive up, get gas, and use the convenience store at the same time.
I think, I think during our meeting, I think we showed eight in the last proposal, I think in this sheet three proposal, we're up to nine.
Has nine plus cars at the pump?
I think we had one, I think we had to be nine.
Okay.
Yep. Five, seven, eight, yeah.
I could add a couple of things relating to, to traffic, just to demonstrate it's not a completely self-serving operation. The, here, you know, the number of gas filling positions is not changing from the existing condition. The only thing that is changing is the size of the store. But looking at theoretical traffic generation in peak hours, the gas pumps basically override that store, that store would have to quadruple before, the store would have an impact on peak hour generation of traffic. So here, the site as currently proposed, even with the store being bigger, theoretically wouldn't generate any more traffic.
Maybe he doesn't want it.
I think it's, I'm not sure.
Then, one of the.
Nah, I like that.
Then I just wanted to bring up, I mean, one of the motivating factors for discussing access off of 376 was because the tractor trailers that do enter to offload gas, you know, basically have to come in and jackknife themselves and have a really hard time turning around, even if it's done in peak hour or off-hours, it's, you know, it's not easy access or easy circulation. So, you know, not looking at, you know, mitigation for increased traffic, but certainly, you know, looking to try to improve circulation any way that's possible. You know, if, if there was a restriction at the one entrance and, and entrance on 376, I mean, there is still full access on 82 into the site. I mean, there, you know, the easterly entrance is, is a full access entrance, left turns off of 82 can, can come there, so that, there's no restriction to get into the site off of 82. Now, if you're saying there's so much traffic coming off of 82 that you need two entrances as opposed to one, you know, I, I mean, I guess that could be up for some debate, but I think what we thought about at the meeting briefly, and, you know, these things have to be thought through, was that even, you know, there might still be an out on 82 on the western, existing western, but something off of 376 would, you know, certainly improve the circulation relating to fuel deliveries, end vehicles coming off of 376. I'm sure some business comes off of 376.
Where are they, where are the tanks filled right now? When you get a delivery?
Was your primary opposition, the fact of having the closing?
Okay, so the temporary loading zone is also where you'd be filling?
The entrance off 82?
82 would be closed, the projects.
So what Brendan's saying, if you could leave the right turn in.
No, yeah, no, coming in, it doesn't, as long as I turn in, it's okay.
Right.
But they could, they could leave the, the other entrance if you could go in out.
So if you could leave the right turn in off 82, heading, heading eastbound, would you be open to, to this additional entrance off of 376?
Yeah, I'd be open to that, yes.
So I mean, even, even if you were to leave this plan as it is, there is still some benefit to circulation by adding an entrance on the 376, even, even from your own, you know, from...
Would it just be an entrance though, not an exit? Because you can't have a traffic going out.
Entrance only.
Okay.
So it, and you know, so it's, it's an easy movement off of 376.
The way, the way it is right now is the, on 82, most likely, you couldn't be powered. It's like, it's acting one way, one way and anyway. People cannot leave.
Yeah, right.
They leave from the other side and.
So, and then, but what, what it would enable you to do though, is to actually restrict that, that right in, right out movement such that you wouldn't, you could do it with curving and not just with striping. So it could be, you know, positive control to cars coming in and out of there, because the tractor trailer would have.
You'd have to have bags off of 376.
No, we'll, we'll keep this in.
He's asking you if you want to.
Well, as a third one, I don't mind, but not to eliminate this one.
As a third.
As a third one, yes, I'll do that.
Mitch, where do your deliveries come from?
My, my delivery comes in, high control deliveries, I mean, this is stationed 24 hours. It comes at nighttime.
So I mean, I think even the road would facilitate a traffic.
Well, I say, I'm, I'm open to third entrance. I have, I'm not gonna. But I'm, I'm against to close this entrance here, because most of my business coming out here. I don't mind having it one way in. We are on the same page.
Okay. I mean, it's something that happened to be discussed with the DOT to look at that feasibility.
It's confusing as it is to get, to make lefts and rights there.
But it, it even, you know, someone that wants to enter off of 376, but there has to be some, some.
So is that gonna make this a pass-through to avoid the light?
Uh, we did discuss that. I mean, it's, it's one of those things that, I, I mean, you know, any corner gas station pretty much has that opportunity.
Well, this one doesn't because it doesn't have that access.
Right, I know, but most corner gas stations actually do have access on either, you know, on either leg. So, I mean, that, that is something, you know, there's gonna be cars in there, you know, I don't, I don't know if the right turn, the right turn movement on 376, I mean, I don't see that as being a controlling movement. I mean, you know.
Right now, I mean, it's a sharp enough turn that you, most cars that make that turn and come off of 376 in attempt to terminate the gas station, almost invariably veer into the outer lane to do that, right? To get that out.
Yeah.
Right.
So, you're right. It's got a lot of merit.
If the DOT would permit that access, it actually doesn't impact, I don't think it affects the site plan at all. It just enhances it. And it allows you to, right, like I said, positive control at the right in and right out. You know, I, I mean, there is that, you know, it's not a clear shot, I mean, there's pumps in the way, there's gonna be cars queuing at the pumps.
Well.
I don't believe it'd be a tractor task.
Is that where the tractor trailer fills the tanks?
Yeah.
So he's basically to be right at that intersection.
Right. He'd be in the entrance. He'd be at the entrance.
He'd be like parallel.
Yeah, he would be, he would be internal to the site.
Right. Now he gets kind of cross with it.
Okay.
Again, things change, but that's why that's the logistics of how the tanks get filled. Does that truck come up on the fill?
Comes, comes from, no, comes from Route 9 and 82, they make an arrive, they fill in and, and move from the building and go back to the.
So if the easier access is off of 376, then the route would have to change.
It's not, you gotta make a left turn and, and you have to.
On unity, I mean.
Yeah, unity.
And come on the back end there to get, get the access. That's natural.
Or come 52, up that way.
Close more for diesel. Come 52.
He's on the chat station.
No, it could come 52, it could come 52.
52 off 376.
376, then he'll have to, I guess.
An extra mile.
I've never seen, I've never seen the tanker be a problem with traffic there ever.
Right.
And I, to me, if you add the entrance on 376, you're just asking for trouble. There's enough cars coming in and out. It's a confusing intersection, yeah.
We, we are open, you guys want it, we can have it. You don't want it? It's up to you guys.
Thoughts?
I think these guys know what they're doing.
What's your opinion about the 376 entrance?
I don't know.
Like it, okay.
I think it might work.
I think it would work.
Okay. Preference?
Whatever they think works.
I'm concerned that it's gonna make it a bypass, but if you think there's a way to do it where it doesn't encourage that and you get the better circulation, I'm fine with it.
Well, do you, Brad, do you think DOT would have, would that would come into consideration with regards to them and that serving as a bypass? Would they consider that as part of their, I mean, you know?
The thing is, it's a, it's a bypass for a right turn movement, which a right turn movement, you know, it's a pretty efficient movement.
Well, we were saying that that, you know, that really doesn't get wholly backed up right there.
Yeah. I mean, the left turn, you know, I mean, it's just, it's not, it's not a movement that usually creates operational problems. You know, and, and actually, I have a lot of data for this intersection, so I'll take a look at it and look at the right turn volume. I mean, one of the things that could be done too is we could get, you know, if we require a bit of field survey work, we could look at the gas station there for two hours and see where the traffic is coming from, and see how many cars really are coming down 376 and coming into the gas station. And, and, you know, not just to facilitate the tanker fill, but if there's, you know, enough cars that are doing it anyway, it could really improve that condition.
Okay.
We'll take a look.
Yeah.
The tank could raise the price 10 cents and you will see five cars.
If it improves the internal circulation of the site and makes it better on the.
Seriously, gas stations based on prices. If you're two cents cheaper, you see the gas, this gas station full of cars, the other guy is empty. You know, I could trick you and just go up 20 cents on a gallon, and you will see the gas station empty, completely nobody. If you're two cents cheaper, you see the gas, this gas station full of cars, the other guy is empty.
Right.
You know, I could trick you and just go up twenty cents on a gallon and you will see the gas station empty, completely nobody.
I won't tell you how.
I'm just trying to-
Do it and I'll-
If you're gonna do that, just also clarify whether you're gonna need to meet or want to change the signage, because your sign is kind of where I would envision you'd probably be pulling the road.
Procedurally, it sounds to me the majority of the board agrees to push them over and back. Take a look at that additional access off three seventy-six. What would be the possibility of keeping that open until it sounds like you're okay?
I don't do it.
So, procedurally on this one, too, is there a way we can move toward, like we did on the last one, move toward circulating and getting the process moving on that?
I think so. Michelle, would we just be able to show two plans, one with, one as-is and one with the three seventy-six to circulate?
I think, I mean, they sort of need to understand, the DOT would need to understand which way, what the applicant is proposing.
You know, one, one thing we could do is try to facilitate a meeting with, you know, Department of the U Section at DOT to float this concept of the three sixty-six, three seventy-six entrance. I mean, the trade-off would be that, right now, he has two full access entrances, and the one would be reduced down to rights in, rights out, and then the access on three seventy-six. We could, we could probably facilitate that meeting within, you know, if not next week, the week after, I'm certain.
I had the impression that he doesn't care whether we put a three seventy-six in or not, it's up to us. You're happy with the way things are. Or do they misunderstand?
I'm happy with those two entrances. It's just two, please, the professionals, with the third one, I don't mind doing it.
Right. I understand, you don't mind doing it, but it's okay with your way to do it.
I don't mind, I'll do it also.
You don't mind not doing it, right?
Both ways.
I, I don't know what's better for the site. I don't, you have, you have statistics you can look at and make a recommendation to us, then?
No, go ahead.
I think that'd be, I think that'd be perfect.
Well, I think, I think the part of the problem there is when that light turns green or the arrow is green, people start to go around that turn. Now, they wanna go into the station.
Yes.
The guy behind him is looking down the road to see what's coming up the road. The next thing, they run into each other. So if you go in off of three seventy-six, you gotta stop some of that, in my opinion.
Okay.
Yeah, that makes some practical sense.
Yeah, I mean, they're nothing-
As a person who actually got into an accident that way.
Okay. All right, then, I think we, if we're gonna circulate and that the board feels it's all right to have the three seventy-six entrance, that's probably the way we should circulate it. But Michelle, I guess, is there, is there a reason we need to have that nailed down if that's the proposal?
I think we can circulate it with the entrance, it's gonna, that would probably be the worst-case scenario as far as seekers concerned, because that would require more analysis as far as, you know, potential impact. So I think that you could circulate it with-
Option three, with the pull of the building closer to the sewer line, closer to the back line?
And just indicate on the EAF that you'll need a variance to, you know, revise the EAF to reflect-
They have to go to zoning board, too.
Right. Well, the attorneys can determine that, but if you need to go to the zoning board, we're referring you to the zoning board.
Again, it's part of minor action, it's a circular improvement.
Okay. All right, so Michelle, as long, as long as we, we can put you back on for, again, for discussion on the fourth, if you wanna, we'll have the discussion about the, any traffic concerns, if you have any, once you look at the numbers, and then you can give us a version of the plan that shows the three seventy-six ingress only. And I think, is everybody comfortable with version three of the plan, or did you prefer version two?
I agree.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
So we'll make that our final version. As long as we have that in hand, I think we can circulate for lead agency before the fourth, before the meeting. Unless you prefer to wait until after the meeting before we circulate on this one. Yes. Or so, yep.
Do it. Do it sometime.
If you prefer to wait, we can make the motion in two weeks, that's fine.
Procedurally, I don't know if it makes a difference, it may be nice if we, you know, think you're in a key with the discussion.
Okay.
So, uh-
Okay, then, then let's hold off on-
It makes a difference on our-
Let's hold off on our end, but we'll put this also on for discussion on the fourth so that once you guys have met with-
Because you may also get clarification on the variance, and that has to be shown in the EAF, so.
Okay. Anything else for this one? Any other comments, suggestions?
We did discuss at the consultant meeting that they would also talk with DOT about possibly adding some more landscaping in that slope on the, on the, I think it says the south, southwest area. It's all DOT property, it would require getting a used and occupancy permit to put more landscaping, but because it is the gateway of the hamlet, that was something we brought up at the meeting.
Which is also a comment from Douglas County, by the way.
Okay. Okay. Mike, is that an issue or landscaping up at the corner?
Golden Gate's not a structure for sound, so.
Okay.
Big tall pine trees.
You can't see it, you can't see a damn thing.
Okay. All right. Anything else for this one?
Big tall pine trees.
All right, thank you, guys. Thank you, and we'll see you in two weeks.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yes. Okay, the next item on our agenda is Gray Palau, ten-lot subdivision on Gray Palau Road. Of course it is, I should've remembered that, sorry.
Yeah, you should've. I've been up here six years.
As I'm looking for the number. Number three for both of them. The one where they, yeah, this one with the entrance escape, I don't know what I think.
Gray Palau subdivision, last time we were in front of you, we had the extension of final approval.
Hey, hey, guys.
Sorry. Go ahead.
Last time we were in front of you, we had an extension for final approval, and this one got held up. If you remember, we were going through the DEP/DEC permit process, we had some buffer impacts with our stormwater outfalls. DEP mandated we go in the buffer area, DEC agreed to it, we had to go through a permit process for the buffer disturbance, we got a hit from OPRH, we had to go out there and do an archaeological study, of course.
Did you find anything?
Of course, they found something right in the septic area, potential for something in the septic of lot number two. So, talking to the applicant, what we did is we took lot number two out of the picture, from eleven lots to ten lots, lot two gets combined with lot one and lot three now, so now we want-
So you just split it down the middle, so it's a-
Plus or minus, split it down the middle. And then we'd have that area as just a non-disturbance area. And we had a sign-off from offices and parks and recreation, took that sign-off, forwarded it on to DEC, DEC gave us our buffer permit. So we've satisfied, we've satisfied that last requirement. So basically, what we're here for tonight is just to amend the resolution a final to reflect ten lots versus eleven.
And no other lot lines were adjusted other than to just draw a line somewhere down the middle of lot two?
Yeah.
Okay, does the planning office have your revised map?
Yes, they got all twenty copies.
Okay.
And then the area is not to be disturbed? There's an area on there that's not to be disturbed?
Yeah, we showed it as a non-disturbance area.
Conservation easement or non-disturbance area?
I think we showed it as a conservation easement, non-disturbance area, and we also showed some monumentation that we're using in the other conservation areas to be surrounded in that site. It's, the area is actually kind of bounded by natural stone wall to begin with, so it's actually kind of-
Not that it matters, but what did they find?
I was gonna say, it wasn't gold?
They found a couple pots and nails, and it said it had the potential for something.
Pots and what?
Nails.
Nails.
Nails, it'd be a whole structure.
Okay.
It's not pre-Columbian, it's-
Nothing of that.
Apparently, we have some treasure hunters here, so.
If they found something worthwhile, I wouldn't have been up there to take it through before you guys.
Yeah.
They'd pay taxes.
Okay. I think we'd certainly, we'd need to just review the, the terms of the easement or what have you. Michelle, any concern with, with the mitigation, just placing conservation easement over it and eliminating the lot, sounds like the right thing, but-
I mean, as long as, I think it's really driven by Shippo at this point in DEC, so as long as they're happy with that.
We've had, Shippo's given a sign-off and DEC has issued a permit, and I think I forwarded that on the PM, Joe.
Okay. John, is that, is that something we should have a revised resolution for since?
I think so.
Okay, so, can we put that on for December fourth as well?
That's fine.
And we'll do the revised resolution then?
Okay.
Does any, I'm sorry, does anybody from the board have any questions or concern?
No.
Okay. We'll, we'll put it on for a resolution revised.
Are you planning on doing anything in between, that waiting then to get your resolutions is gonna screw you up?
No, no.
Okay.
Right now, we're just, unfortunately, we have to update our approvals with Board of Health, with DEP, stormwater with DEP, water in septic, so it's basically, they have to issue new plans. So we'll be doing that in the meantime.
Okay.
But that's just a formality, paperwork.
Okay. Then we'll do that on the fourth, thank you. All right. The next item on our agenda is a referral from the town board for a proposed zoning ordinance to allow the processing of material generated on a construction site.
Do it.
And I think, I agree.
I agree. Right, it makes perfect sense.
I think, I think what we need to do is just provide back to the, to the town board if we have any suggestions regarding, excuse me, anything that would go into the language. We don't actually have a draft of the change itself yet, right? I think we just have the resolution.
I think, I think what the county is getting comments from the board tonight to get ready for the whole appearance of concern for a team.
Right. John, I had a couple of suggestions. I think we, we still need, right now, we do the cut and fill analysis, I think we would just need something like a, maybe with a cut, crush and fill or something like, I don't know.
Quantify.
Yeah.
I think anything that's processed should be used on the site, not that they have a thousand, ten thousand, they crush ten thousand, they sell five thousand.
Yeah, we're not, we're not taking the top off the hill and we're gonna process it there and then ship it away.
It's gonna be strictly to be used on the site.
That makes sense.
Okay.
The idea of minimize truck traffic.
And this is just because I don't know how this is done, but the one thing I was thinking is, is there a specific way we want that material processed where we wouldn't want them just to do blasting to process it? It would be mechanically crushed or what's the-
Blasting isn't part of processing, that's part of excavation.
Okay.
So we don't, we don't, I mean, you need to get the necessary, if you're gonna blast.
I'm making that up, but I didn't know if there's ways of doing crushing that's less impactful to the neighboring properties, if there's homes around with dust or noise and that's-
It's part of, yeah, it's part of special permission conditions. For instance, you wouldn't wanna crush on a Sunday, maybe not on Saturday, depending maybe certain hours of the day, like you might limit the excavation activities.
That's how it stands, hours of the day.
Yeah, the big thing is control.
Noisy and probably dusty, but I didn't know if there was different methods of doing it where one is less impactful than another, not really?
No, there's jaw, there's impact crushing, you know.
Okay, it's just a big machine's gonna-
Crush. Yeah.
Okay, all right.
So typically-
Now, one thing you may wanna consider is depending on the project, you could have a situation where they have to remove all the rock, they wanna crush it, stockpile it, and maybe it's gonna sit there for a year for them to build all the roads, so, you know, it's something to be considered, you know, as you're gonna-
So stabilization or whatever.
The time you process to the time you have to use the material, are we okay leaving the stockpile, you know, procedures like that.
And is there something where you would crush it to, you know, dust versus pebbles versus small boulder, I mean, is there different ways?
Well, there's different sizes, but I don't think you'd so much wanna-
That would just be something you'd say at the time of the permit based on where they wanna use it or how they would-
Be gravel.
Yeah, I don't know.
No.
I think that is noise.
I'm asking, I don't know anything about it.
I think you just wanna look at noise, dust, hours of operation, proximity to your residential.
Now, whabs, if it is material that has to be removed, we're not gonna allow them to process any of that material?
If it's gotten removed, I'd say just remove it.
Right.
Because now you're entering another operation of crushing it with dust and noise.
No, but I'm saying, whabs, if they only need half the material on site to process, only crush half of it, then, okay.
That minimizes the disruption to the neighbors.
As long as you're encouraging, you know, mining operations, you know, boring.
Scott, is this in commercial districts only or is it commercial and residential?
Would be, yeah.
I think it would be residential, too, because if it's a subdivision and, like Scott said, if they wanna put the roads in and-
I was just thinking about neighbors next to rock crushers.
Well, I mean, maybe a thousand feet, I mean, it's gotta be some dis, you wouldn't wanna have a crushing operation because you're gonna get dust on the windows potentially of neighbors.
But we would leave that in the purview of the planning board to set at the time we did, granted a special permit to set that as a condition, or would you put that into the law that it has to be a certain number of feet from a residence?
I would put it in the law.
Okay, so what is it, five hundred, thousand?
Five hundred to a thousand, I'd give that a little more. There's definitely a threshold distance, I'm not saying whether it's five hundred, thousand, it depends.
If there's specific dust control measures or that sort of thing, whatever, whatever's appropriate, I would think we'd wanna make sure it's either in the purview of the board to specify that or that it's in the law.
That, that gotta be in the law, it's definitely gotta be dust. Do you measure to the next residence, properly into what, five hundred, thousand? Do you think there's thoughts that we need to have to leave in time frame between the removal, the control, the technology, if you didn't put that in, it would definitely be a year. I think it should be a sunset, maybe they have to come back for an extension.
So you have hours of operation, duration, and-
Dust control.
Dust control.
Jason mentioned about putting a certain-
And a full analysis, so we know what happens.
And something on hours of operation, if any of your other codes have restrictions on hours of operation, however they manage it.
We have, yeah, we do have some standards that we use.
And there's also, I think, the noise that they're working on, so whatever, there's any noise that might remain due to maximum distance at a certain distance away.
Okay.
They don't have the noise from the machine.
Right, because we can't have somebody set up shopping a one-acre lot doing something, that's just not gonna work, it's gotta be reasonable.
And that's another thing, I think it shouldn't be for a one-acre lot, it might be a, whether it's five acres, two acres, I think, you know.
I think as long as you make the distance from the nearest residence long, large enough, that'll dictate the site size in part, right?
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Please, please, I thought you were done.
Like they, like the Gulf Station, they were looking at-
The back of the hill, yeah.
-the blasting on the backside of Fludhamole. Now, that site really doesn't lend itself to a crushing situation.
Right.
You know, even though it might available five hundred feet away from the next residential house, that site is just relatively compliant to-
Right.
Yeah. It's a two-inch.
Well, they would've had a hard time justifying they were using it on-site, too, that was a difference.
Well, they could use it for tankback building, crush for small, they could use it for mining blacktop, I mean, there's different things you could use it for.
Okay.
I just, just have a question on, on the different kinds of crushing. If you, if you look at Eagle Ridge, for example, it's all shale. you, if you look at Eagle Ridge, for example, it's all shale, they were doing that with just shovels, and big guys on cranes, and just breaking it across and breaking the stuff up.
That's not processing, that's excavation.
That's still excavation, okay, that's where I was, okay, where I see...
You take the material, it's been excavated.
Yeah.
Okay, and now feed it into a machine, either a screen plan or crusher to separate it, reduce the size, that's processing.
Okay, so what they were doing there would not be considered processing, and that's still excavation?
That's excavation, that's excavation.
What happens when they hit big boulders, like granite that were dropped off by the glaciers, we don't have a lot of them, but...
That's, that's excavation.
That's still excavation.
Possibly blasting.
Possibly blasting, okay.
I mean, there's a fine line, if a guy takes a hammer and now breaks the oversize or crinkling out the wood, I would not call that processing, I would call that...
Okay, I was just trying to understand, because I don't...
But if they're crushing it up to two inch stone, that's a little different, right? Okay.
If they bring in a crusher, that's processing.
Okay.
It's not just the crusher, it's also a screen.
Well, a screen plan, yeah, sure.
You can have, you know, like, like Hopewell Glen, they could bring a screen plan in for instance, they start making product, and a screen.
Okay.
Which I'm sure they're gonna...
I have two questions, will this be for material that's strictly on site, or can they bring material from offsite?
No, strictly material generated on site to be used on site.
Okay.
Excavated on site to be used on site, so...
Will it be portable plants or permanent plants?
No, these are portable, some are tracked now, some are trailed now, you know, different.
Okay, okay.
Are we gonna put anything in the law about inspections?
Probably depends on the duration, might need to.
Yeah, I mean, we may go through like our mining regulations, see what things might contain from the mines, but...
Okay, good. I know our timeframes are...
You have to inspect it, because you don't have the dust controls operating, you're gonna have to inspect it.
Well, they're gonna have to tell, but, but like you said, they're gonna have to tell us when they're gonna be doing it, the hours of operation, so it should be easy to manage.
Right, I think that permit should not be a blanket permit for the project, it should be, you come in...
For a specific set of days.
And say, oh, yeah, for a period, you know, it's good for thirty days, or some finite period that, no, you got, you're good to crush whenever you wanna crush, because then we don't have the control over it, initially, we don't have the type of control.
Even if there was a requirement that they notify the town on the days that they're doing it, so that if you wanna go inspect it, you can do that?
You let the last, you just leave open end of the last, so you gotta be there every time.
Is there anything, well, there'll probably be unique to the app, I'm seeing anything with great insurance or anything like that, if they're moving rock like that, but that's, that wouldn't be us.
It's like any other equipment, right?
Okay, I think that hit everything I had. You said sound, right, decibel?
Yeah.
Okay.
Or one, not to go for a certain hour of the day, five o'clock, and then go like before seven o'clock, and whatever that...
Right, okay.
And then, within that period of time, you don't wanna have, I think the machine doesn't have proper to that.
And the intent is to have the planning board issue this permit at the same time they might issue a cut and fill or subdivision approval, or is it to go to the town board for approval?
Um...
For ease of the application process, I would say, the planning board...
You have, you have, you could have a new project, that could possibly be under the purview of the manager, or you could have an existing site that's being, already underway for some reason, you know, like if you took Stat Act instead.
So can we be specific that if it's, that it was an application pending before the planning board, it's the planning board that issues the permit, otherwise it's town board or whomever?
In the case of, like this Mike London subsidy, Jackson, you know, they have a gravel operation, if he wants to crush, he wouldn't come to the planning board, he would come to his own board to get his permit amended or permit, so it might be whatever board does it before.
But by report, we do a lot of good issues there too, if we look at it.
Right, but they may wanna crush it as well, so they would come to the planning board, I guess, or the town board for that.
Okay.
But I think we gotta further define what the board did before.
I just wanna be clear, if it's the planning board's purview, if we're, if we need to make sure it's done and referred somewhere else during our process, if we own it, if it's part of our process, that's fine.
I would lean towards that.
I think it makes things easier, but probably...
Really with the project, the town board's not gonna be...
No, yeah, that should be...
And it's a temporary, it's not a permanent picture.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Period of time, so.
It makes more sense for us.
Okay.
And then the other thing we wanted to add with SCAR is exempted activities, we wanna add any structural type of over excavation and replacement as an exempt activity, same as separate systems.
On separate foundations.
Right, foundation.
I have no followings, Scott.
Yeah.
On the occasion, Mission Church, what happened was they had unsuitable material underneath the foundation, so they're, they're removing earth and bringing material back, but it's not changing the pogy of the site, typically the excavation has to do with changing the pogy of the site, and in that case, it's strictly structural issues, same as your separate, yeah, so much changing the pogy of the size of your building.
For a second, I was thinking of the situation where you might have a commercial building made of cement or something, where they wanted to crush the building itself and use it as fill, is that something...
Well, you raise a good point, because that also can be, that, and also asphalt can be crushed.
Right.
Concrete can be crushed, masonry can be crushed, so, there's no reason to prohibit that, that should be the same.
I was just gonna say, I, I don't have a preference, I mean, I, I think the more we can keep things on site and within...
So if there's a demolition on site, you can...
If it's material that could be recycled, and that's what the applicant wants to do.
Not shingles, but, you know.
No, yeah.
Recyclable material, yeah, reusable, whatever you're...
Right.
Okay. Any other comments or suggestions from the planning board? Scott, is this enough, or do you need something formal from us?
Does the planning board issue blast permits?
No.
Nope.
No, it's down to the building department.
Why doesn't the building department issue this?
Well, right now it's prohibitive, but I mean, moving forward...
Why wouldn't the building, as opposed to coming to the planning board?
Well, they come to the planning board for the excavation permit, and it's...
What, what we're suggesting is if, if an applicant is before us specifically talking about a project, and part of their analysis of the project is the cut and fill of the site, if they know they're gonna need that permit, the planning board would issue that, the ability to get that permit at the same time we were reviewing the site, but there may be other situations where it's not before the planning board, where there would be others.
Because that can also affect the cut and fill analysis, how much we remove from the site, and...
Right, so it'd actually be part of the planning process?
If the contractor discovered rock that he, that he didn't know he had, and he's already got his permits and everything, can go to the planning, or part of the building department to get a crushing permit, or does he have to come and go to get it?
Well, that's sort of, that is exactly what just happened with Mission Church, they had their site plan approval, and then they realized that they had to remove more cut and fill than they expected, and so they had to come back to the planning board, because it was, it's because there's a special permit.
When he's in the middle of another process, he exposes the process, maybe going to the building department would be more efficient.
Well, what, what, what could possibly done is that the planning board, I think, thinking through the planning board will permit it, and like, and then they would come actually down to the building department.
Authorize it, but the building department would issue the permit.
Yeah, it would permit, just like on a site plan, you're approving the site, they still have to come down to the building department, bought a building.
That sounds reasonable.
But I think it could work the same way as that, and then we can keep the actual type control on from there.
That's fine.
Scott, how prevalent do you see this becoming?
Hopefully more and more is what we're...
More and more, you know, everyone wants to do it, but they wanna do it tomorrow, and that doesn't work because it's prohibited, so the Mission Church was the first entity to actually write a letter in, requesting or acting, so I think once, you know, Hopewell Glen would've crushed, Four Corners would've crushed if it was on the books, nobody wanted to take the initiative, the church was the first entity to take the initiative to make the request, so.
Okay.
They have machines now, they can come in for one day and crush it, so that's the, that's what they're at today with their...
Thanks.
I know that the plant, the, excuse me, the town board has this scheduled for a public hearing on December thirteenth, so, John and Scott, is this enough feedback from the planning board, we won't have time to write a formal...
I think everything that, you know, incorporated, I think, Tom's the author, but I think he's gonna flesh out pretty much the conditions, hoping to, to Scott, he'll be able to code, but particularly the mining code is, and what we're looking at, and I was saying, Scott, before Jackson, Jackson's application, he didn't remember, it's a good projection, so...
I think...
Scott?
Yeah.
So Mission Church isn't gonna crush now, right?
That's correct, they said the timing didn't work.
They may or may not, they have to go buy their backfill material for the foundation, but they're gonna do the park lot, as I understand, in the spring or summer of next year, so they may have some that they're gonna crush to use for the subface for the park lot.
Okay.
So, I think they're still evaluating.
That's what I'm saying, if they do crush, they have to use them on site.
Yes, absolutely, they will have to use them on site.
Everyone would, anyone who does...
Anybody has to use it on site.
Okay.
Whether it's crushing, processing, it's to be used on site.
So make sure you have...
Because now you're no different than West Hook or Hill.
Right, no, yep.
That's not the intent, you know.
So, you wanna just make sure, I think, back to your point, that we're very specific as to what materials can be left on site, so if it's something like shingles that need to be removed, or, or that sort of thing, you've got that purview.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments or suggestions? Okay, if you wanna, if, if you want us to look at it again, feel free to circulate by email, otherwise, I think you have all of our feedback, so we're probably good.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. The, the next item on our agenda is the elderly cottage housing opportunity referral from the town board, this again is a proposal, I think we, we saw this when they placed the cottage on the, is it the Country Charm site, so now this is the request to come back and actually allow the permit to have these cottages at residences within the town, so the, the proposal here has a, a list of conditions, and the town board is asking for our feedback. I know I had a couple of just kind of general, general comments, and then we can, if you want, we can go through these one by one, but I guess my first comment, Michelle, is to you, the way this is written doesn't really conform with the way our code currently reads, so things like specifying a specific building height versus the height to the middle of a, mid peak of a roof or something, I just wanna make sure that whatever we put here actually conforms to bulk tables and things like that, so we don't have issues where there's things in conflict, so if it's as simple as saying, instead of the height, it shall, won't exceed fifteen feet, if it's as simple as saying, can't be more than a one-story structure, I'm, you know, I'm fine with that. That's, there, there was a couple of things where there was reference made, but it wasn't quite worded the way we would've worded it in, in code. So, does anybody have any feedback just initially on the concept of the Echo cottages?
I'm gonna go through a point by point.
I'm gonna go through a point by point, but just on the concept itself.
On your point, though, there's nothing about setbacks.
There is, this is number four.
Second rear.
Same, but it doesn't say, I'm sorry, is it same as like a shed, is that what we're...
No, it says for principal dwelling.
No, it's the same as the dwelling, so the dwelling has twenty-five foot setback.
Yeah, within dwelling setbacks.
I know we're skipping down to it, number four, but I also had a note here that they needed to be specific whether the setback also applied from the principal residence, or if it was still from the border of the property boundaries. I believe they intended it to be from the property boundaries, but I also didn't think these should be in a front yard.
Yes, definitely.
So it should state that, so I, yeah, it would be very specific, because it's, it says where possible it'll be in the rear yard, but I really think it should be in the side or the rear yard, depending on the law, but not in a front yard. So going back to number one, the, the height will not exceed fifteen feet, I kinda read that as a one-story structure, does that, does anybody have concern about that, I don't know if fifteen is normal, but that seemed like it might not be right, as far as roof peaks, the way we refer.
I think this is something completely new.
Fifteen would be a maximum.
How high, it's on, it's on wheels, so that's about, what, four feet?
So if it's three feet off the ground.
Three feet, okay.
Three-foot walls, eleven to the peak, probably gets you thirteen, fourteen, so fifteen would be adequate.
Because it's more than one, a typical one-story, if you were building on a foundation, for example.
So you're okay with fifteen versus saying one story?
Well, I don't wanna be in thirty.
You could say, um, one story up to fifteen feet, if you didn't want it to exceed fifteen feet.
I just don't want there to suddenly be a basement on something we're calling a cottage, I, I just, I know that's not the intent of what...
Well, we can just spell it out, we can prohibit, you know, just spell that out, it'd be no...
And I think the intent here, and I didn't see it in this, was that it would be a mobile, um, a mobile unit, but I don't think it actually says that here.
I know, this looks to be, in the way I'm reading it, looks to allow things that are not necessarily mobile units as well.
Right.
Well, is this something that's gonna, are they gonna pick it up and just drop it down on the ground, or are they gonna leave it on its frame and wheels?
Well, I, I mean, this is actually the first time I'm seeing this text tonight, so, but I think with Echo cottages, the, the gentleman that was here, that was all gonna be mobile units, but I think it looks to me like he wrote the zoning to be more inclusive of other, of other structures as well, I don't know if that was his intent, or just the way he worded it, but certainly it doesn't say that it has to be mobile anywhere that I've seen so, thus far, because it says it will, it, it says to create an elderly cottage housing opportunity unit, a temporary detached accessory dwelling for an elderly relative of occupants, now, I don't know what the discussion with the town board was, was whether or not they were considering other, because there are, there's movements all over the place to allow this kind of stuff, like tiny houses and, and other things that aren't on wheels, and so I don't know if that was the intent of the...
Well, see, but then they would have to put it on some kind of foundation, and I don't, I think it should stay on a frame and wheels, and then put some kind of facade around.
Right, they, they refer to skirting in...
Skirting, yes, so, I think it should be spelled out that it should be mobile.
So a temporary mobile.
It's just to be for the temporary.
It says temporary.
It was when they're...
But it doesn't say that here, that's, that's our only point, we should add it.
Along those lines, one of the notes I had was, you know, defining what really is temporary, I know it says you come back annually, but you can come back annually ten times, right, and so, ten years is very different from two years.
So it's definitely...
But on the eleventh year...
I would have a hard time putting expiration on, on it, once somebody's approved for that.
What I'm saying, I just, if it's not on wheels, it has to go on some type of foundation, right?
Sorry, you've exceeded your...
Sorry, Grandma, ten years are up, you're done.
Well, no, I mean, it's supposed... Well, what's it gonna be, what's it gonna be sitting on?
Wheels.
No, I'm saying, if you're not on a frame and wheels, what is it gonna be sitting on?
Well, it's gonna show up on wheels, now the question is, do they block it up and put wheels on it?
Block, yeah.
I don't know that they're gonna put a slab on it, per se.
No, well, it's, it's not some...
I guess they're gonna block it.
The way he described it, he did not indicate there would be a slab.
But if they block it, then they're gonna still have to pour some kind of...
I think he said gravel, they put it on gravel.
A form or something, right?
They might pour just some pads, some small concrete pads where the blocking is gonna go, that's all he talks about, you know, two by two, or three by three pads and put it on.
I just understand, doing that, it's always...
You blow your lawn.
You know, they're not gonna know whether this is gonna be there for a year, it could be there for...
For twenty years.
Number of years, yeah.
Okay, all right, um, the second one, the floor area of the unit shall not exceed four hundred square feet, so by mine, is twelve feet the widest it can be, if it's mobile?
I think they go up to fourteen.
Fourteen wide?
Regular mobile, they go up to fourteen.
Okay, so if it's twelve feet, it would be about twelve by thirty-three or thirty-four, if it's fourteen...
You know, it's like anything, it's gonna get bigger over time, you know.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, okay. Thank you. Math in my head at this hour is a little harder.
I wasn't doing it.
Okay, so do we wanna put maximum dimensions is where I'm going, versus a maximum square footage, or do we not care about the dimensions?
Well, if they're making a mobile, but...
I'd say more the total area.
Okay, is four hundred square feet reasonable?
Thirty, yeah.
Again, it's for an elder.
Can you get a double wide Echo cottage, I mean, you know?
Get two of them and put them together.
I don't know, that's why I'm asking the question, I don't know...
I agree, I'm, I'm, that's why I'm thinking...
Well, I would, single wide, just make it single wide.
Are we putting a quantity per lot, or per residence?
Single wide up to four hundred square feet.
Okay.
Can we just say one per residence?
No, single wide, up to four hundred, or whatever.
But they can't have two of them on the lot, maybe Grandma and Grandpa don't wanna live together.
You mean we couldn't have an Echo community in a lot?
Might have an Echo community.
Okay, or you could be fighting with your spouse over who's parents, to live in the Echo.
There you go, yeah, that's right, there could be, both parents.
So, for the floor area, single wide and leave it at the four hundred, design of the unit shall resemble a cottage and be neutral in appearance and tastefully screened and skirted with stairs and porch or ramp, I didn't know whether the neutral in appearance, did we want, if, if someone's going to be placing these in the community, did we want the ARB to review this, or...
Did it ever review residential?
They don't, they don't ever, because this is kind of a new thing, and it's gonna be moving around, so, okay, no?
Well, you know, I just wonder, can you pick your color, kind of thing, I know. This is it, it's one color, and that's it.
Okay.
Sure you can pick the color, or...
You could have any color you want.
It's a flag. As long as it's all...
No, but I'd rather, you know, if somebody's gonna paint it neon green, I, I think that's, No, but I'd rather, you know, if somebody's gonna paint it neon green, I, I think that's, maybe that falls under the neutral in appearance, but-
What do you think, Michelle?
I, I think it should probably be at least compatible to the, the dwelling that's on the site, you know, I mean, I don't-
But does it rise to the level of the ARB?
Well, I, I'm throwing it out there, just as, what's the standard when it says neutral in appearance? Who judges that?
So, um, this is a special permit, right? They're asking for it, a per, a special permit, this would be allowed by special permit, so, I mean, it could be-
The ARB would have to sign off on it.
It could be that we could leave it up to the discretion of the planning board at the time the person submits the application, so you could see what the existing house looks like. And then make some determination about what, I mean, I don't know if they're gonna have any ability to, to order a specific color or not.
I mean, if it's vinyl sided, it's not like you're gonna change the siding color.
You think they are? So maybe, maybe at the time, I mean, I don't know how this works, but maybe at the time that they come in, the planning board can look at what the existing house looks like, try to figure out the best location for it on the property, and also determine the color.
And I just wanna clarify, I don't believe this is the planning board's purview.
Oh, it's the town board's special permit?
I hope we never see these.
It's a, a building, a zoning administration that can issue the permit, and if they don't issue the permit, it can be appealed to the Board of Appeals, CBA. That's the way it reads right now.
Oh, yeah.
That's the way I'd, I'd like it, I mean, I would want us to have to see it.
The town board has asked us for our feedback.
I understand, I'm just making sure that-
Yeah.
Well, then I think it's gonna be a little more difficult to, um-
Well, then, a specific color has to be put on her. What's neutral?
Do, do we get in trouble with things like tastefully screened, that's open to such interpretation?
Yeah, it really depends on the site, you have to screen it if you're on a wooden lot, and no one can see you, you know what I mean?
Yeah. I mean, I think that's reasonable.
Yeah.
It's gonna be there for six years.
What do, what do you see as the average duration of these things?
Twenty, say, two years.
I, I don't know, I'm, I, I recall he said some statistics, I just don't remember what he said.
I think he said it was like the year, or a couple of years, something like that, it wasn't- But how can you really determine that, I mean? Sorry grandma, I gotta return the trail.
I think the discussion would become of, with an annual renewal, where you're providing that documentation again. It's gonna be the purview of the zoning administrator.
Can we get into, I don't know, I think they haven't been there long enough, but this isn't the kind of thing where neighbors are gonna come and say, hey, it's been there three years.
Kid of the help.
Boo grandma.
No, no, it's not gonna be a, you know-
No, actually, or-
The lemon will be mortality, I mean.
Or a point where the, the independent living is no longer possible.
But with an average lifespan then, of like seventy-five to eighty, you can be sixty to qualify for this thing.
But you don't have to be, you can be a, you can be a teenager.
You could, we're not talking twenty years for these puppies. Well, I, I understand, but that's pretty-
Well, let's, let's keep going in order, cause we're gonna get to that. We're gonna, I'm sorry, I wanna-
It's fine, let's keep going, and keep going.
Um, the side and rear yard setbacks we talked about, from property boundaries, and not allowed in the front, front yard, does anybody have anything else they would propose here, or change here?
I agree with that.
Okay, okay, um, maximum coverage by building shall not, by buildings shall not exceed twenty percent in all residential zones. Michelle, my only comment here was the definition of buildings, does it include the shed, the pool, the fountain water feature, and the house, or driveway? So just, I wanna make sure it's consistent, so it's very clear what gets measured, to make sure we need that. Does anybody else have anything for five? Okay, um, six, the number of occupants in the Echo unit shall be limited to one person, two if one is the caregiver.
Did he have a two-bedroom, one?
No.
They're all one-bedrooms, I think.
And I guess, um, is it better just to say it's limited to two people, and at least one resident must meet the qualifications, or something like that? Or, no?
I didn't think the intent was for two people, I thought it was if you had a sing, you know?
I think it was always for one person.
One person. Who needed to be close to family.
Right.
I put, that was my impression.
But what if it's a married couple that needs to be close to family?
It's only, it's only grandpa, it's not grandma and grandpa?
No, one gets kicked.
One gets booted out.
So you can only-
I'm asking, I mean, that's the reality.
I mean, is it only like a widower cottage, or, you know, that's the question, or divorcee cottage?
Maybe it should be two, I don't know.
But two plus a caregiver then?
Two, but one bedroom.
I mean, how would you define caregiver? Do you have to be a certified nurse, or, I mean?
Yeah, they'll be, well, hey, that might work out.
Okay.
Well, are we limiting it to one bedroom?
No.
No, not, no, just four hundred square feet.
Doesn't it say anywhere one bedroom?
No, it's never limited to, to one bedroom in this description, it's just limited to the four hundred square feet.
Should we limit it to one bedroom?
Not if, if you had a permanent caregiver, then they have no place to sleep in.
Well, we haven't said that they can have a permanent caregiver.
They're proposing two, if one is the caregiver.
But where would the second one sleep, if there's only one bedroom? I mean, assuming not-
Yeah.
I could agree.
A pull-out couch?
A pull-out couch?
Would you check it out?
Not the most comfortable of accommodations.
My understanding was always one bedroom, because you're gonna take one bedroom out of service in your house, if you had a typical site.
Yes, that's right.
And to, to afford this unit, so now you start down to two-bedroom units, or you're, I mean, you start, and then now, now you got parking, okay, now we're always people parking.
It is kinda semantics, though, whether there's one or two bedrooms, if we're allowing two people, right? Or do they assume?
I didn't even know we were allowing two people, but.
He never said anything about caregiver.
We're looking at number six right now, so.
And I think the intent was, it's gonna be there, cause family's there.
The family is the caregiver, not somebody-
So wouldn't the family be the caregiver, I mean?
Okay, so then, limited to one, and we'll strike-
I thought one person can, and now you go to the other person.
Strike caregiver.
Okay. Okay, um, number seven, I struggle with this one, um, the resident of the Echo unit shall be either infirm, handicapped, or over sixty years of age, and it says or, um, and shall be related by blood, marriage, or adoption to the owner of the principal's single-family dwelling. I read this meaning if there's, if there's a, if there's a teenager that's handicapped, we could put an Echo cottage in the backyard and give them independent space, or? I mean, that seems like a different intent than what was originally presented.
The last sentence sort of takes care of it.
So, if the word or becomes and?
No, the last sentence, I think, takes care of your concern.
But if, but living assistance, if, if you have a disabled young person?
It is said right on the temporary senior lip, temporary senior house.
So I think maybe that it should be, shall be, shall be either infirm or handicapped, and over sixty.
Yes, I agree.
And is sixty the right age? Well, I'm just asking, I mean, there's a lot of different definitions for senior, is sixty the right age?
So wait a minute, are you saying, so basically you're saying, and I just wanna clarify, I think I know the answer to this, that you have to be infirm or handicapped? You can't be healthy.
That's correct.
You know, but, but it depends-
Yeah, this is a-
It depends on-
Right, cause otherwise you could have, I mean, it could be there for thirty-five years.
It depends on, it depends on what your definition of healthy is.
So first condition is infirm or handicapped, second condition is over sixty, and I, I'm not sure sixty's the right number, but that's what's proposed.
I mean, but, yeah. I think we really need to define temporary, if that's, if that's gonna be, because I, I'm looking at this, and, you know, somebody that's handicapped, does designate a handicapped, could not have a, a serious health issue that would, would be life-threatening, so they- I mean, and I, I'm not making a judgment either way, I'm just saying we'd need to clarify whatever the town wants to do there.
You are dying within three years, so you're qualified.
I'm pretty sure we're all gonna qualify by the time we're done with this.
We can make that happen faster, Mike.
That's good, that's good.
I think Bob's just sitting here wondering when he needs to go in one.
No, no, what, what bothers me is, that's true, I do it right now, but it depends on what your definition of handicapped is, I mean, you see a lot of people with handicap stickers who would qualify as handicapped, they have trouble walking and getting around, does that mean?
That shouldn't qualify.
That's what I mean, I mean, I don't think-
Yeah, but it calls out, and-
I don't think that was the intent for this.
Certification shall verify the need of the occupant for living assistance.
Yeah, I mean-
But what is, but is there a definition of living assistance?
Down to a doctor's note.
But I will, I'll tell you, like, I'll give you an example, my mother-in-law had both her knees replaced, she did not get around well, she could not live on her own, because she can't do things like take garbage out, and, um, you know, anything that requires, me, even housework is difficult for her. So she, but she will probably, because her mother lived until her nineties, she will probably live until her nineties, and she's in her seventies right now. So, and she would have a doctor, she's got a handicap thing, and she would have a doctor's note saying that she couldn't live on her own, probably. So I think it's, it's very difficult to regulate this particular type of issue.
I, I hate to put a, a cap on it in terms of number of years, or something like that, because you can't look into the future, and to put someone in a position where they've now, you know, you've established this-
But is this kinda like a-
Temporary residence, and then to take it away from-
Is temporary only meant to mean that it can be removed at any time?
It means that it's mobile, and, and that's really-
Could this be like, kind of like a hospice situation?
It could be.
That's probably the extreme.
Yeah, cause usually then it's within weeks, or something like that.
Right, which you wouldn't go through all this to-
To do that. I don't know how you qualify this.
I don't think, I mean, I think, I think we have to-
Well, what we're talking about is adding, adding a structure to a lot that is gonna meet all the-
That could be there for a indefinite period of time.
But it's gonna meet all the appropriate setbacks, it is going to be removable in the event the need for the structure's no longer there, and I think we would have to look at this and assume that it could be something that's there for twenty years, if need be. I don't know what the average life of these buildings are, I, I don't know whether that's their average life or not, but I think you have to assume that that's what could happen.
Okay.
And who maintains it? Do we have anything in here for that?
First, it maintains the residence.
Yeah, Michelle, we should add something for maintenance.
Well, I was just thinking, there should be some way of, the zoning enforcement officers should know if there, if there's a reason to, um, remove the structure. And there has to be, you know, if like, if the structure's in complete disrepair, they could have to have a mechanism by which they could, they could pull the permit.
Um, before we move off of seven, is sixty the right number? It just seems very young to me, that's why I'm asking, it seems-
In, in terms of some people, they'll be very old.
Exactly.
I just-
Or thirty.
It's not the age, it's the miles.
That's right.
There's a lot of ways we could say this, so that's gonna say sixty's the right number.
I don't see this coming up at a work-
Yeah, I don't think, yeah.
I don't either.
Okay.
Leave that to the town board.
Okay. Um, but in agreement that it needs to be, that separate the two conditions, infirm or handicapped, and over sixty, so they meet both of those, or did we want it to be any one of the three?
Any one of the three, I think is the intent, so.
So I think it's also for people, you know, that, you know, single-
I think, well, you know, when he explained it to us that night, it was for somebody who was dying.
It would be pretty easy if a doctor said the juror is sixty.
No, not dying.
I mean, well, that's-
It's needing, requiring assisted living, assistance in living.
Assistant, right.
Then why was he talking about these would be like one or two-year kinda things? That means the person's probably dying. I think really that was the intent.
If you're healthy and happy in sixty, you're not gonna wanna go living.
Well, I, I agree with you.
All right, I'm moving to John's.
He's coming over to mine. I'll be done, I do now, he wants four of them.
All right. All right, I'm gonna just leave a big question mark next to this one, because I really think that it requires a, maybe a little more discussion with the, the proposed, um, person who would provide these. Okay, so number eight, at least one of the principal owners must live in one of the dwelling units on the lot, and I was a little bit confused by this, because I thought this was being proposed for single-family residences, so that made me a little bit concerned, I felt that they should be living in the principal dwelling.
Except for unless the owner is the person that gets sick and needs to move into the Echo cottage.
And their kids are in the house. Cause the kids want the house?
Cause the kids want that.
You gotta go.
I'm, I'm pretty comfortable saying that they need to live in their principal residence, but if you guys are okay with it, shifting out to the mobile home, I guess.
Well, sometimes people leave their homes to their children early, earlier than they should. Earlier.
Than they should.
So the kids move out, huh?
And some of them get kicked out.
Yeah, that is true.
All right. But the, but the intent here, I just wanna reiterate, the intent here is that this only happens on a single-family residence lot, not on a multi-tenant building where we end up with two or three cottages, cause everybody, I just wanna be sure that we're clear. Single-family residence, one cottage per lot.
So we can state that clear, I think.
Okay, uh, if an inhabitant of the Echo unit has a car, one parking space shall be provided, I just thought adequate parking shall be provided would be okay, and I don't know, should we provide spaces in?
No street parking.
No street.
Because the person might not drive.
Now you get the, the question that they can drive, get around, do they really need assistance, you know?
See, I, I don't, I, I don't-
Well, that's that caregiver.
Okay.
No, we, we struck the caregiver.
I just think onsite parking shall be provided, is that sufficient? Paved parking, what, what's the right thing, right way to say this?
Well, I mean, the thing is, I mean, we were joking before, but when we saw, we were reading this, but, you know, if your house is in the middle of the lawn, and it's, it's distance from the main residence, are they gonna be parking like in the middle of the lawn? I mean, it's, it's a little bit, it is a-
No, you're not gonna, yeah, you're not gonna provide a space there, I mean-
It's gonna, you're gonna be part of the drive anywhere here.
You're already gonna have-
It's like adding a, adding another bedroom to your house.
They gotta have site, the plot plan, plot plan, lot of the building part, and share.
Okay.
So I think the one-
So can we just, let's just say adequate parking, and- Can, can we say adequate parking, and the assumption would be that parking would be paved parking on the driveway, or in a garage bay already existing at the house, or something like that?
Cause you get a lot of dwellings that don't have paved parking, so now they got to pave their driveway.
Well, adequate parking, or appropriate parking, or something like that.
Why even have parking at all? I don't even think you should have any. Cause a dwelling's already gonna have parking, right?
Yeah, but the problem is if you locate the cottage at a distance from the principal structure, and the person is infirm or handicapped, and they can't-
So say you need to use existing parking.
And even if they don't drive, they may have a caregiver that comes during the day, so either-
But what's wrong with saying use existing parking? Cause you, you don't wanna- Okay.
What if they put the trailer where the parking is right now?
You can't.
Why can't you?
It has to meet-
Well, that's, cause-
They could put it on the, on the park, they could put it in their driveway.
But not if it's in the front yard.
That's in the front yard.
I think there has to be some sort of review of the-
No, it's gonna have to be a plot plan submitted to the building apartment, I think.
Existing conditions, the site, and some sort of review of what makes sense at the site, because I don't see how else this works.
But the building apartments could review that.
Yeah, they would review the plot.
That's like kicking a can down the road.
Yeah.
Plot plan showing location, setbacks, and parking.
And park, and adequate parking.
Okay, and you know what, then, let's strike, let's strike, um-
And utilities, and utility hookups.
We're gonna get, I have utility as a thing at the end, because I thought we needed to address that, um, so strike number nine, Michelle, and replace it with what Scott suggested. The plot plan showing location, setbacks, and adequate parking, uh, and utilities. And I thought it had to be more, the reason I wanna come back to that is I think it has to be more than just water and sewer and electric, I think there might be cable or phone, we, we just need to have a concept of how that happens. Um, applicant shall submit, number ten, applicant shall submit all information required for issuance of the permit, um, issued to the owner.
And I'm sorry, but somebody had mentioned screening? They're gonna show proposed screening in that plot plan as well.
Screening, got it.
What should probably happen is number ten, should say the applicant shall submit all the information, and then we should list individually all of the information that needs to be submitted as part of the application, plot plan, you know, adequate for it, like, it should probably be listed like that.
So far we've got location, setbacks, adequate parking, utility hookups, and screening.
Proposed color?
Uh, yes. Or facade, or however you wanna say that. And, um, and Michelle, and, uh, the, the skirting. And pat, if it's a patio or a ramp, or whatever they're doing. Okay, permit shall be renewed annually by the zoning administrator. Scott, any issue with eleven? Do we have a mechanism by which we would evict and remove? Well, because that's what this is implying, so I wanna-
The corner.
They decide for, uh, non-conform, yeah.
Okay. No, that's twelve, eleven is, they're still there, they just haven't applied to continue.
Do they, do they have to notice?
Well, I mean, there shouldn't be any non-conform, right?
Yeah, it was very-
If they don't come in and renew, and they'll stop.
Oh, oh, all right, and they just cite them. Yes.
So now they're not gonna have a valid permit.
Do they?
Is there a mechanism by which, if it's prior to issuance of a new, a renewal, where you can, you know, if there's something, site of violation, or something, you know, going on at the site, that you can remove the structure?
Or fee, fee for non-renewal, something like that.
Or do you notice the neighbors that it's up for renewal? Oh, seriously?
I'm sorry?
Do you notice the neighbors that this is up for renewal? So if it's, you know?
No.
No, you have to-
Think about it, I mean-
You have to get the neighbor's permission to initially put it there, so the assumption would be that they know that it's there.
You do?
Yes, that's number thirteen.
But I'm saying, that's what I'm saying, so why would you re-notice it? To say, we're coming due for, because you're, they're part of-
And this is an every-year thing?
Yeah, I mean, but wait a minute, every time you go for a zoning variance, you gotta notice the neighbors, right? So-
So-
It talks about, or giving them ten days' notice. They need to consent or ten days' notice, which is the same sort of thing you're talking about, right, Michael, notice?
But on a renewal basis, not just the initial.
Okay.
Yeah, and how do we know that the, how do we know that the original inhabitant's in there?
They're checking that every year, apparently, um, they're saying, the residents of the Echo unit must be reconfirmed at that time, failure to comply with this renewal provision, so theoretically that means that they're looking at whoever was supposed to have been in the unit, and it's still there.
That would be on the zoning administrator, though, Scott, that's the enforcement.
And who gets notified when the death occurred?
No, Echo's supposed to do this verification, and they're supposed to certify.
That doesn't, that's not what this says, though, so if that's what we want.
Submit to the town, yeah, we're not gonna go out and-
Start checking all the Echo units.
But, so are they considered? Are they considered the lessor, then?
Well, yeah.
So the lessor has to confirm the resident is still?
Yeah.
So Michelle, we have to reword that, that the property owner has to get the confirmation from the lessor back to the town.
My understanding of lessor is responsibility to annually reconfirm the need for this, and it's that person that they're administrating it.
Right, okay.
Town can-
Twelve is when the unit is vacant, making sure that it's removed in a timely manner, um, Scott, they said weather permitting, and that to me kinda leaves it way open. So I didn't know if you wanted to have something like if, you know, if it's somewhere between, say, December first and March thirtieth, that would have to be removed by May thirtieth or April thirtieth, something like that, so that you have some sort of a time limit on weather permitting.
Well, if it was last winter, they could remove it anything.
Well, it depends where it's located, access, you know?
I mean, I don't see people continuing to pay rent if it's empty, but I-
Right. Right. Sounds practical, isn't it?
Not right...
If it's been there four years, two months, one way or the other, it's not going to make a difference.
Okay, so should we make it sixty days, just to give a little bit more...
Within sixty days.
Sixty days, yeah.
Sixty days, okay.
Now, does the town collect any taxes on these?
I'm sure.
I don't believe so.
Does town want any taxes on these?
Why not?
I don't know.
Does the town get taxes on a shed?
It's not a shed, it's a dwelling.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's a replacement bedroom.
It's a replacement bedroom.
I don't know how you can...
Okay, I mean, I don't know, I'm just, I'm just asking a question.
I'm just playing devil's advocate.
It'll be in there.
There's got to be some dollars.
Maybe that's a question for the town board, is, is there a permit fee each year?
Yeah, should we get a permit fee, should we get...
Or revenue?
We should get something.
Um, so thirteen...
Because you're going to be going out and checking every one of these.
There's going to have to be a building permit associated with it, and a building permit fee, and a CO issued, I mean, so there's going to be some fees associated with it.
Yeah.
They get a dollar forty per square foot.
Will it have its own utility, Scott?
Yep, well, it's supposed to get the sewage, the water off the house.
That's why they cut a bedroom out of the house.
I mean, maybe if you take it off the house.
No, but they get the sewage from the house.
Yeah, they decrease one bedroom in.
No, I understand that, but they got to connect to the house.
Right.
Okay.
I think so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get to utilities before we're done.
Okay.
Okay, so number thirteen, the, so twelve, I'm sorry, twelve, we changed to thirty, sixty days from thirty, number thirteen, I think it reverses zoning administration, but I think it should just say zoning administrator again to stay consistent, and they wanted to give applicants' neighbors ten, adjoining property owners ten days' notice of the permit, is that sufficient, is it a certified letter within...
Well, wait a minute, can the adjoining neighbors say no?
Well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, normally I think we have twenty-five or thirty days is the normal notice period, so I would think that would be, I think that's reasonable, a little more reasonable for neighbors, but...
No, the...
I mean, is that just informing the neighbors, or can, do the neighbors have a say in this?
Adjoining property, that, that you, we have, they have to ask...
That's the way it reads right now.
Consent or...
Consent to the application or have been given ten days' notice of it, so the notice would say, if you have any issue with this, you need to contact...
Contact within ten days.
The zoning administrator.
Okay, but, okay, so they, what if they don't...
But I think ten days is too short, I mean, ten days just feels too short.
I agree.
Could be on vacation.
But you, you know, we have to be a really disgruntled neighbor that was not going to let you do it.
I don't really...
I mean, if we're doing this, do we really leave it up to the neighbor whether they make the decision or not?
Yes.
It doesn't say that, though.
It does, it says, it says to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator that the adjoining property owners consent to the application, or have been given notice of it.
So what happens when they give a notice, what?
Well, if you're given notice, you have to have a time for the neighbor to say they don't consent, that's really what it means.
But it doesn't really say that, it just says give them notice.
I, I call this a, it's a, it's like a negative response letter, it's, I'm notifying you, I'm going to do this, if you don't care, you throw the letter away, if you care, you're going to contact the zoning administrator and say, I don't want this to happen.
Okay, but then does it not happen?
Does that stop it?
No.
It says the property owner has to consent, if someone doesn't consent, I think that stops it.
And what's going to happen?
So it just gives them more time to consent, is all.
It gives them more time to consent.
If you're putting a shed in your backyard, your neighbor can, if you're getting a variance, your neighbor can stop that.
But those are usually permanent.
Right.
These aren't supposed to be permanent.
If you meet all the rules, it's not stopping.
But I also, but I also think there's an...
No, well, what's going to happen with that shed is the zoning board will hear the neighbor's concern.
Right, and, and they have that in sixteen.
Maybe a screening, or this, or that, or move it to a less conspicuous place.
But it shouldn't be an automatic no.
Because the neighbor doesn't want the shed, doesn't mean they won't get it, but they might have to adjust it.
Yeah, but, but they could stop.
But Scott, I think, but Scott, I think what this is...
That's when the three of the neighbors show up, that they stop it.
I think what this is saying is that as long as the neighbors, as long as the neighbors consent, the zoning administrator issues the permit, if the neighbors don't consent, you're kicked down to sixteen, where they can apply to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
So the zoning administrator is only issuing the permit if all the neighbors are okay, you're not putting the zoning administrator in the position of neighbors yelling at you and trying to decide between neighbors, that's not what you're doing.
All right, I agree with that. As long as there's some other avenue for them to get it.
The other avenue is sixteen, that they go to the ZVA.
Just going to be a little more, okay.
So then the ZVA is going to be dealing with these all the time.
Yep.
The ZVA does deal with this stuff all the time, I don't want a six-foot fence, I want...
As long as we don't have to deal with it.
If you won't, I have to.
I'm sure Norma is...
I'm sure she's, she's watching this right now, going, wait a minute, why am I getting a phone call from Norma right now? No!
That's an echo.
What does it matter with you people?
Okay, um...
All right, so that's just going with the twenty-one days or the ten, or something like that.
Okay, is, is it twenty-one or twenty-five, what's our normal, what's our normal notice if, if you, it's twenty-five, it's twenty-five, so we'll go with, we'll go with what's the same.
Public hearings, what's a public hearing?
I guess twenty-five.
I thought it was ten days prior for a public hearing.
The notice has to go out, I think it's twenty-five days.
Within twenty-five days, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, within...
You think we know?
And I'm assuming certified letters, so they can prove that they did notice the neighbors, something like that.
This is intense.
So is Echo handling all of that stuff?
I don't know.
Whatever we put in here.
Because that's...
No, I'm saying, is this up, well, do we...
It wasn't discussed, that's not going to...
Because that is a town cost.
I'm sure they'll be advising.
What? No, the applicant should, would have to notify their neighbors and provide the proof of that to the zoning administrator.
See, that's what I'm wondering, is, is Echo always going to be the ones coming in, getting the permits, submitting the plot plans?
Well, I don't know if other companies will offer the same service, or, I don't want to make this unique to one...
Okay, I'm just...
One company, or one, I think it has to apply.
Okay.
To me, the applicant here is the property owner.
It could be anybody, it could be the property owner or Echo, right?
I think, I think it should be the property owner.
It should be the property owner.
It should be property owner?
And then they have to have the consent of the lessor to place the, that, that would be one of the elements they have to provide, whether it's Echo or... Okay, um, health, health, approval of the health department, so fourteen, this is where I wanted to just talk a little bit more about the, the hookups, I have electricity, would we, I'm assuming these would not ever have a gas stove or, or heat or anything like that, is it all electric, or could there be a gas line going to one of these things?
I think we should.
I think what he said was all electric, a hundred percent electric.
Okay, so no gas, so electric, and then water and septic or sewer connection?
Has to be part of the house.
And phone or...
Goes into the existing house, right? We're hooking up to the...
It's got to tap in somehow, yeah.
Right, it's got to tap.
To the, right, to the current services by the...
Including electric, gets tapped into their service, there's not going to be a separate meter?
No, I don't know.
I would, I would go to their service, I would think.
Okay.
Okay.
All electric, I'm coming up with, yeah, somebody's got sixty amp services around there, you're going to put it total electric?
Well, it has to be approved.
It has to be. Have they got to upgrade your service? Good timing.
Upgrade the service.
There you go.
No generators left?
Listen, these things are like three hundred dollars a month, so they can afford to upgrade your service.
So electricity through the primary, or what do we say, electricity through primary residence hookup?
All your tenants have to come off the house, you have primary residents.
What about phone or cable, do we have any issue if they want to run a separate phone and cable in?
I'm sure they will.
I'm assuming not, I'm asking the question.
They could just splice off either one.
And then water septic, water and septic or sewer also through whatever the primary residence hookup is.
Wifi, no.
No, no wifi, for you.
No, no wifi for you.
Okay, anything else for services? Okay, Scott, fifteen, I don't have any suggestion here, I don't know whether these are appropriate insulation factors or not, I don't know if anybody else has any suggestions.
A little bit further to building perspective for a comment on that.
Okay, and then sixteen, the decision of the zoning administrator may, may be appealed to the zoning board of appeals, which may vary any standard herein, so the standard of neighbor acquiescence could be acquiescent, that's a big word.
I did have one.
Sorry.
I have a question, is, is there anywhere in here where it says that they are eliminating a bedroom in the primary dwelling?
No.
Doesn't say that.
No, we would have to make that a condition, or, and maybe that's the...
Well, if you're on a municipal system, wouldn't necessarily have to eliminate that one.
No, but...
It originated with the board of health, saying you can have one of these if you eliminated a bedroom after you're on a municipal system.
Yeah.
Then the board of health would weigh in on that, and it would be up, and there would really be no physical...
So we're leaving this up to...
So we're not requiring that they do that?
The board of health?
If, unless the board of health requires, so it'd just be whatever condition the board of health, okay, I'm fine.
But I mean, that's also an enforcement, I mean, who's going to, is the, so the zoning administrator going to go in to the primary residence and say that you didn't eliminate a bedroom?
Who would know that today if the board of health required something to issue a permit?
I mean, usually you just have to remove a closet from a room, right, so that's not a bedroom anymore?
You can have a door shut, you can have a closet in a...
I don't, I don't even know how you would enforce that.
Yeah.
I thought that, yeah, okay.
I mean, I don't know how, how it would be very difficult.
They were going to say, well, you know, we're not going to use that bedroom anymore, but then, as soon as they walk out the door.
Grandma's in there.
Somebody's in there, so maybe...
And then, Michelle, just going back to number eleven, something Jason said, when they do the renewal, I think we have to have in there the, make sure, making sure that they're maintaining the cottage appropriately, that it's in good condition and appearance screening and all of that is still in place.
So would that, would that be up to the Leasee, or the, or be up to...
Be up to the property owner.
Property owner, okay.
Principal residence owner.
Did you want to put any proviso in there about pets?
Ah, good point, I think Grandma does have her little dog.
Well, sometimes you have pets that are like...
Pets, the caregiver.
Yeah, I mean, it could be seeing eye dog, or you never know.
Yeah, but...
Well, service animals I always consider different from pets, I would think service animals would be okay.
But you know what, a lot of these, oh, yeah, I don't know.
In private residences, there's no...
I don't know how you're going to regulate...
Yeah, I don't know how you're going to regulate Grandma from having her cat, you know, it's...
Do you want to?
No, I mean, I don't think we should.
Okay, I'm just trying to think...
Well, it's four hundred square feet, it'd be hard to have more than one.
You can't.
It's going to be a paddock.
Okay. Is Echo responsible for the maintenance of the cottage?
Well, that was my point.
Well, they own it.
They own it.
They're going to want it maintained.
But I think the property owner has, from the town's perspective, I think it has to be the property owner, because if you're going to issue a violation or something, you're not going to issue it to Echo, you're going to issue it to that property owner, right?
But the, does the property owner, can the property owner make those changes, like if, you know, say it's a window that has to be replaced, or something like that?
Well, that's going to have to be a contract between...
Between them and Echo.
I would, I would put the burden on the property owner, and then the property owner has to have an appropriate contract whatsoever.
Well, it's like when somebody's renting a house, it's all on the property owner, right? It's not on the guy...
Before we're done, item fifteen, it says minimum ceiling height of seven feet six inches, except in bathroom.
I'm assuming they drop the ceiling for fans or something.
How much?
Six inches, eight inches?
I just think we ought to sit.
I don't know, is there a standard height for...
Are you worried about it going too high or too low?
Too low.
Too low.
How tall are you?
I'm a little guy and I'm shrinking.
You're holding my place.
I don't...
He's got four units.
All right, Michelle, maybe you and I just draft a response, I don't think this is as time-sensitive, Pam, I'm looking, it's not as time-sensitive as the last one where we just gave the...
Are we the only ones viewing this? Does the zoning board are viewing this?
No. It probably should be, because there's...
Absolutely, they're bothering us, I would expect they'd want to be.
We'll, we'll, we'll add to the list, I'm sorry. I didn't hear that, okay, so, Michelle, maybe just between you and I, before December fourth, our next meeting, we can have our comments finalized back to the board, and then we can send it to the town board after the, after the Fourth of December. That should still be in enough time, even for the third.
Bob's clock's ticking, we've got to get this done.
He's moving in. He's staking out his backyard tomorrow, so...
Exactly, he's moving in.
It's going to order my Prius, it's going to be good.
All right, guys, any, any final comments on the Echo class? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Don't move.
All the favorites, all right, thank you, guys.